Situate planning board and safety center. I'll entertain the motion for the agenda.
So may I?
Is there a second? Second. All my favorite?
Hi.
All right, our first item is the continuing coverage here for mixed-use special permit, Drew Company, MBTA 247 Driftway. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you.
We have no sound system, so hopefully people in the back will hear you.
Okay.
Okay. So who will begin?
I'll start. I'm greeting everybody. My name is Attorney Robert Galvin. I represent the Drew Company on this particular project. What I'd like to do, because I was not able to attend the initial meeting, is just to write very briefly, because I know you're somewhat familiar with it already, and talk a little bit about the zoning. Then I'll turn it over to John Pedro. John's going to talk a little bit about the project and some of the aspects of the project, drive up to speed within the hearing and the site, and then very briefly the architectural track. So we'll try to get right through it all quickly.
You've got this mine off, interdising stuff, so that can work out.
John Edro.
John Pedro.
Another John, John Ford. Is that what Mr. Air Force doing?
Tim Zentup.
And the chair at the end that's missing is David Black was our transportation person who's down, but it's not all of them.
Okay, thank you.
He's lost.
He's checking.
So I'll keep my... I can stand if you want me to. Is it easier, as you think, to hear?
Um, how do you stand at the podium and talk to the people?
Move around a little bit like this?
You can do whatever you want.
Okay.
No pressure party here.
Okay. All right. So very briefly, this is the four and a half acre site off of the Driftway, currently owned by the MBTA, under agreement to the Drew Company. As you probably already heard, the MBTA is going to continue to own the new rotation property, the parking lot, the restaurant, and they'll have access through this development to the Driftway and the Hex across Eastern area of the Driftway. As you know, the property is in the commercial and Village Business Overlay District, and because of the overlay district, we're likely to be in this type of a project. The project is a 78 residential units in four three-story buildings with a common building architecture on the first floor of the buildings, other than building A and where there's about 10,500 retail and commercial space located in building A and B and C, which is the last one. The unit breakdown is 27 one-bedroom and 51 two-bedroom units. Each of the proposed residential buildings and units have dedicated parking spaces that need or exceed the minimum parking requirements in the Village Business Overlay District and the underlying Commercial District. Eighty percent of the parking per unit is located on the first floor and below the buildings. As part of the project, we're going to be proposing to reconstruct a portion of the new Driftway with approximately 17 parking spaces, which is some of the significant public benefits we think are attributable to this project. Retail and commercial uses are in building A and B, which is the red building on the left-hand corner, and then building B, which is centered to the middle and in front of the project. And then we have lastly, we have the coffee shop building up in the upper right-hand corner, building F. That was rejointed, posed in the sign of a drive-through, but we've eliminated that as part of the progression of the drawings. And from our perspective, this project provides a much needed rental housing option at a very convenient location next to the MBTA station in the whole situation and provides opportunities for people that are transit-oriented and wish to commute into the city. As you can see from the site, we have the architects or the engineer for the project. The entire site is connected via site access drives and internal line ways, also providing easy access across the street to the Green versus Key Station. So the relief that we're asking for as part of this project is twofold. We're asking for a special permit under section 560.4 of the bylaw, is the Village Business Overlay District Special Permit Section. We're also asking for site plan approval, which is referred to in that special permit section, and also set forth in section 770 of the bylaw, which is incorporated into that section. And as you know, we've had dozens of meetings prior to filing, which is part of the special permit process. We've had a number of meetings with the planning staff. We've dealt with the selectmen, discussed some significant public benefits that we believe is probably a priority for the project, and I'll discuss that in a little minute. But basically, we've done all the things that were required procedurally before we filed this project. When we initially filed the project, our plans were still being finalized, and we were afforded in the last couple of months the ability to work with your peer and your engineers and the planning staff that have been very helpful to us. And we've made a lot of changes and able to work through a lot of comments that were initially raised, giving us the ability to kind of expand the experience here tonight. And what we'll do is summarize those in a moment. As you know, this type of a project, 15% of the project has to be affordable, and the private pool requirement, and the affordability standards for people that are looking around here. Some of the significant public improvements are connected to the density requirements, so highlight those. 17 two-on-street parking spaces within the layout of the Driftway. Extension of the network of sidewalks in this particular area. There'll be a completely reconstructed MBTA estate, MBTA parking lot on this site, which we think will actually be easier as a result of this project. Really, for the first time, providing some use on the opposite side of the main bus station block. I'm there almost every morning. My children live on the MBTA for PCI, and you know, only a few people that will park on the other side then probably never let us rent it. So in addition, as you might be aware, and we've dealt with the selectmen, we participated in the Masworks Infrastructure Grant application that was submitted by the selectmen, engaging in our cost and expense closely with him, who's working with us to prepare an infiltration mediation plan. In addition, we've committed to providing a significant cash flow in the commission as a part of that towards the infrastructure improvements associated with that project, and that's $229,000. So reasons for the request of relief. We've... You're authorized to renew a special permit for mixed-use development just like this. No part of the lot, our yard areas for this project, are required for any building use. The project, we believe, now meets the design standards required under section 560.8. And we've had a number of meetings with the design committee over this particular project, and I think it's fair to say that this is a moral assessment with the design standards. As I indicated, 15% of the housing here is going to be affordable to someone that's low or moderate income households. More than the required net floor area of the first floor building, which is mixed-use, is properly in retail use. The mixed-use buildings now are consistent with the density requirements, which allows to go somewhere between 17 and 20 units per 40,000 square feet, provided we provide significant public benefits. We meet or exceed all of the parking requirements in the bylaw, which clearly given the ability of a one, two, or three bedroom unit. And as I indicated before, we follow, I think, exactly the type of pre-application process that you have required in your bylaw. In terms of the site plan approval, also water associated with the site is going to be needed to reduce the generation of stormwater, reduce impervious surfaces, to provide for the required treatment and disposal in accordance with these stormwater management regulations. We've provided through a combination of how we situate the buildings and how we've landscaped the site, and we have our landscape architect here tonight with a means of protecting the people that are the future occupants from what might be used in offensive uses of the other properties that are post-bug, some of their industrial use as a drugstore post-bug. We've also committed to informing our future residents of the existence of these operating uses so that they won't surprise. This is an area that has a very diverse group of operating uses, including a train that will idle for a long time in the mornings, so there will be some noise generated by this project, and certainly our intention is to inform anybody that's interested in moving here of the uses on the buying properties. You're here in a moment for my traffic and safety experts that the site has safe and adequate access both inside and general circulation and off-site. And we've responded to Mr. Dirk's comments regarding some improvements that he's recommended. As you know, this property will be connected to sewage. We've got adequate locations on-site that we can show for the storage of waste to be removed on a regular basis, and this adequate water capacity for us to be joined to this particular project, both part of a mitigation that we've committed to cooperate with and participate in the end funding. We've tried to minimize the volume of cotton bill and the sewer, be taking all appropriate soil erosion control measures in this project and go into operation and maintenance plan for dirt construction afterwards to make sure that we do have. There's still a lot of natural features on the site that were tried to be preserved, candidly, so to the extent that we can, we think we're supplementing what's already there today in increasing public services. Parking areas are adequate, offered from appropriate sites. Kind of an unusual circumstance for the a lot of commercial uses, and you're not offering from operating residential uses, but we're still doing that to the extent that our parking would be viewed as adverse impact to that neighborhood. Our light is all contained within the site, still operating properties. We think this is a project that provides a safe, functional, convenient access and living environment specifically envisioned when this bylaw was created. With that, I'll turn it over to John Pedro and tell you a few more.
Well, I've still a lot of my thunder there, so a lot of it we've covered. No, I think just as we prepared last, I think we've had some, a number, three meetings actually with design, for to look at the projects. We've made some, I think, real improvements based on our feedback to the site project for the deal, so I think I'll jib on through that and then go focus on what's changed. Obviously, building F changing, moving the drive-through up top of the site was a big change, and I think maybe there's a lot of concerns that we had from some of the here which we'll hear about more as well. The one piece I want to go back to is just the MBTA. We have not closed them yet. We were supposed to close a month ago, or so ago. That's on their end. Ours is a paperwork issue for them, so we're working through that, close next year at least. We also have talked about agreement with the MBTA, depending what the uses are for commercial and retail, to have set aside some parking, additional parking should be required. They're open to talk to us about that type of agreement, which, you know, again, depending on the use. I had questions the last time we came here about MBTA and the lot, whether the parking that they were asking us to maintain was sufficient. I went back to the T to get their response on that, and they have conducted studies on a lot of their properties. This is not unique, that they're disposing of what they consider additional land that's happening in Newburyport, Quincy, and other cities and towns, but they do extensive review on usage. They do take into account future usage, and this is a number that they want to maintain on the site. Those are questions I've had last time around. As I said, Bob mentioned a lot of what I was going to talk about. Go back, go back just to... That's the site that everyone's very familiar with, but go to the next one. This is just the overview that Bob went through on the site, number of units, and our proposed uses. Again, I don't want to go back over everything that we've covered, so go on to the next one. Maybe I'll ask at this point, to move us along, how should we model, talk a little bit about the design, what's changed, and I think approves, so you guys.
Thank you. As I guess, as you've said, you're pretty well familiar with the site plan and how we organize this site and the reasons for doing that, in terms of the parking and in terms of the public spaces and the streetscape.
Would you just come a little bit more toward your left and talk to both us and the audience, so that they will hear the words of this? Thank you.
They'd have to be real close. So the site plan, as we talked about, is organized along creating a center, which we think is really important asset, and that's around the retail building A and the retail portion of building B, a public space, an open space, that's on the circulation path connecting the dots from all of the entry points of the residential buildings to the T platform. The reason we're here is because of the T, where we can go down and cross across in a powerful lightning time, so that's really important. Then the changes that we've made since you've seen it, I'll start with an easy one, and then we'll go to an elevation, but I think the planning board, Ken, was very strongly in favor of utilizing the roof space of buildings, so we have this higher elevation, we can look out over the other sites, and we can look and see water across the lake, and it creates a really beautiful place to be. So on the southerly buildings, residential buildings D and E, excuse me, C and D, we created, using this flat spot, we created a forward look on the ends of each building, which faces south, in terms of the view and southwest for freezes, some of it good enough for us to be. Those will be for the residents, the apartment residents, and they will be accessed through the main lobby, so it is true access. It won't be for the community, the 28 apartments here. This, I think, shows a couple of things that we've done, that we think have improved the architecture of the building, but I just last mentioned when we started at the top here. You can see that the landscape decks are at the ends of the building, so they'll have a great view of it. Plus, as you're entering old Driftway and you're coming up to the buildings, I think it's going to give a really nice top floor kind of definition of the architecture. You'll be able to see activity at the top, you'll be able to see the landscape. It won't be full of lots, but it'll be just a tiny, creative niche place. The other main thing that we've done, starting again at the top, is that we've animated the gable ends of the apartments in sections. This is a 30-foot wide gable, and we lowered the roof in order to make the ridge and the roof itself kind of appear as a really strong element against the sky. So by pushing this roof back and making it at a shed dormer angle, we're able to cover the roof space, which is behind, which will have all of the air condensers and mechanical equipment, so shielded from the view and the sound will go up. It won't interfere with what's happening on the ground floor. So that was a big change. We've also taken and we've projected, there's another drawing coming up that will show, these projections will vary from a foot in front of the base building, this is 18 under the base building, so the elevation, as you go along from the street view, will be modular. Makes a big difference. This takes full advantage of that because it's south and southwest, so I'm coming down, so it'll break against the projections and amplify. Now, starting at the far left, this is the standalone retail building. We changed the material there to all shingles, and we're going to kind of work the development true shingle style with shingles, which will differentiate that building from the residential buildings. Here, the materials are on the gables, the jack, these will be fibered. We're choosing a kind of classical New England seaside color, and we're adding a base color, again, a classical color for the recess, and that's made to amplify the animation of the site. When we hit the ground, the dark line we see here, that is the exact profile of old country lane, of old Driftway, excuse me. So we're climbing up. When we kind of create the sidewalk coming from, and it's kind of off the site, it's downward, old Driftway and new Driftway create the intersection, the site next to us will be developed, it won't be a doggone forever, as the value's increased, that'll be a picture of mixed-use project. Others actually still are having proposals to that effect as we speak. So the sidewalk becomes more important, it's a kind of beginning point down at the crosswalk and at the lights. It goes all the way up and kind of terminates at the plaza for the retail building, so it has a nice natural progression. And as we go up, we put the entries to the residential buildings out on the street so that they'll have a street address of old Driftway along the road, and we separate this B and C. As you go through, this will be the access for the vehicles underneath building B and underneath building C. The road itself, as it comes in along South Road, will go up as it's climbing with a natural slope of the site. So on this side elevation, the garage will be open, and what we've done is to propose a screening system in garage spaces using a system of screen mesh that we can roll ID on, so it'll be a natural green, we think, really quite nice looking facade, at the same time allowing natural breezes to kind of have a mechanical benefit to the systems for ventilation and the rock. Also added, and this was added the suggestion of the design review condition, the search condition, we've added the use of field stone on the ground level, which is at the garage level. As it steps up the hill, the site walls will be used, they'll be clad in the same stone, so it gives a, I think, a classic New England kind of base for the buildings, and it looks good, and it's a nice kind of point to the wood facade and the shingle. This is an example of the ID as it goes through the seasons. It's really, really wonderful material. So we'll have it on the ground in the front of the garage, and we'll have it on the walls as well, but these are on masonry walls, we'll have it on its screen system to the air with the wood. This, you've seen before, this is showing how the building step up, we build a podium, and then we put the residential units above that so we can kind of step up. These are the open green ones, street walk on the downed side and on the uphill side are the main blocks. This is a detail of the entries for along old Driftway, building B and C, and here's the main building, the residential, showing the clavber, traditional shingle style clavber, and the stone, a stone mace that wraps around this, that's a lobbie function, and it goes back to the stone wall of the garage and building. And here you see one of the panels of the garage. And the addition of kind of landscape features, sitting areas as we go up to along the sidewalk, you know, we have a great place to sit, and as we go from the lower part of the side up to the, or out to the vehicle side. This is a 3D view, and this is a good thing to show the changes that we've made of adding, this is the deck kind of area with the overlook to the south and west. We projected this gable end out from the rest of the building. Building used to be flat, we pushed that out. We've done that on several buildings of the residential, we've done it on building E as well, and we like kind of what it does in terms of handling the site. So you can see here's the main sidewalk going up. This is the parking, the travel park that's supported on it. Entrance for people, entrance for cars, but this is the exit for cars actually, and this is the rooftop with these shed roofs that connect, that fill in in between the gable projections. And this is the roof level, that's an indication, just kind of approach the elevator to, yeah, the roof, the condensers anyway. So you come out of the elevator door, come across. This is a street view looking up along old Driftway, the street sidewalk, the main sidewalk is a generous sidewalk to put trees planted for shade, and as we come up, this is the plaza level. This is the projection at the beginning of the building that's adjacent to the plaza. You can see this to be a great place. This is the retail projection kind of underneath the apartment level. This is a kind of eye level view from the roadway looking at the plaza. We're kind of considering this, as I said, the head of the center of the community. Everybody goes through here, kind of on the way out and in as pedestrians from the train. All the three sides are going to be protected, yet to be determined, but we're looking for this retail, really animates the outcome and really serves the community to the best we can. So we're showing, starting showing details of platters for benches, you know, platters for landscape, shade trees, ornamental trees, and shingles, shingle skin on building A, which is happening around a more traditional facade on the current residential. So this is just a print of the next slide. What we're going to show is that the sides of building D and E, these are a full level apart, because we're stepping up the hill, you know, goes from the point up to the high point. So this is the full story of building, it's adjacent building, and they're linked together with an elevator door and stair door. So this is the side, building D and E. Again, we've done the same gable projected to sides. These are set back, these are forward. This is way forward. This is recessed, the link in between where you enter. There's two of them, which will be much more efficient, like putting those two where they could share a core with the same one, instead of having one over there and waiting for that, and some people on, you want to do all of them. So it's either side. This is the lower level. I've had a question for you, are those windows? You know, windows? These, yes, those are windows. So those are windows, the elevator you come up, there's small sitting area there, and so that'll be the view. So again, this will be a rooftop deck of a solid foundation building on building D. And we're traveling up centerway. This is the crosswalk that connects across to the public access of old Driftway between building D and C. So the circulation system is linked, and it's strongly linked from retail space across to the platforms and to the connections for all the four of the entry foyer's and entry blockies for the residential. This shows the view, we're walking up centerway, and my virtue of pulling back those roofs and keeping the gable ends out, we kind of can amplify the effect of the doors, the door for straws, which was kind of one of the, I think, one of the rules where the zoning was first designed for trade. You feel good about that? Here you can see, look, you can see the pedestrian way coming across, so there's a broad sidewalk system that goes in front of the building for behind building D that connects down to the plaza for the... That is dead. Nope, nope. Being brought through. Being broad through. Yes, yes. Okay, this is, you walk all the way up to the top, so this is where Center Way connects with the road. So, this is MBTA car's access going, see the back lot? This is the east lot for the MBTA reserve parking. This is the, this is all dedicated for retail parking. So, you can come up, swing in, park and go through. This is Building B, there's a connection here, Building A is this way forward. So, it's a direct connection makes the parking really easy to all of the town. This is a street view of that Center Way, broad sidewalk behind Building B that goes through to the plaza. And what we're trying to do is develop these public spaces for their great benefit to the retailer. It benefits the lot and food, really nice thing for the retail and make it really good place to live. So, next.
John Ford.
John Ford?
I don't know if you can take a question out of the app because we've tried to go through the show for one.
Ken? I'm not doing house stuff because I admire you today if you weren't here for an hour at some right now.
At this time? Do you need me there or just?
Yeah, why don't you do, because then people will be able to hear you.
Has the board received our recommendations? Okay. Yeah, so there's not much more to say other than what's in the recommended, you know, the written recommendations. But I'd be happy to answer any questions or amplify anything that's, you know, that maybe not quite clear. We did meet three times with the applicants and felt that every time we, you know, that they were responsive to our suggestions. We were concerned about the, sort of the articulation or the animation of the facades. They seem to have responded to that in a pretty nice way. And, you know, they've also been responsive about materials and just the, just what the project will look like from the eye level at the street level, which is, it's going to have a significant impact on the entryway to the town there. I think there's nothing that was left out of any of the presentations that we just made that I think I need to say more about, but I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
So, I think it's tremendous improvement in quality of the applicants. This is great, particularly to do with the architectural feel and all the fact that, you know, it's got kind of a broken facade now and not all flat. One question for you on the color selection. Just kind of looking at and thinking about how this is going to look in the wintertime versus the summertime and whether there ought not to be something a little more bold that would look a little more, would look better in the wintertime when everything's, you know, pretty much one of it. Particularly yellow seems to get lost.
Lost.
That's just my, just my sort of quick assessment of it. I'm wondering if you guys thought about different kind of colors to use.
We talked a bit about the color, but we didn't make any specific recommendations. We actually were, I'd say, more responsive to suggestions that came from the applicants. They originally had some older colors and the four main residential buildings, I'll call B residential. Who knows, got some retail in it. They were all different colors in their original, as we originally rest of. Blue, white things, sort of a brick red and that type of thing. I think it was generally our impression that the revision that showed the yellow with the gray was preferred. I think that's probably a little bit of trick of the eye that happens, you know, the concept of, you know, atmospheric perspective. So, when things are supposed to look like they're a little further away, you know, like painters always put that into their landscapes and stuff. They darken it. And so, having the brighter colors here and then the, you know, darkened section here, even though like for example this offset here, I think is only a foot, right, on that one, whereas it's eight feet here. But I think it just sort of helps receive that other plane back there, so it's not quite such a big flat plane.
I think that helps a lot with all the definition of red, and I like the gray.
So, I'm not, I'm not a big color expert. I don't know if that same atmospheric perspective could be achieved with a different color. I mean, it likely.
I was just trying to get a sense of whether you and the designer do.
We didn't go to that, we didn't go to that extent. We liked the sense of the atmospheric perspective, I'll keep using that term, but really, maybe another color would, you know, a lighter, a light green would also do it or, you know, something like that, but we didn't go there.
There were a few things that you mentioned that maybe had now been addressed and I just missed them. Like you talked about detailed lighting plan and fixture types.
Right, so we may see that later from Mr. Ford, I'm not sure of the, there were, there, what we saw was almost what I call like a mood board. It really didn't show the specific street light fixture, you know, but it gave an indication that it would be of a reasonable height and a sort of a reasonable look. I'm not sure if we've got any more also that, yeah.
I just want to get your input and ensure we take and you would be back.
Right, yeah, we did, you know, I think we indicated in the, in the notes that buildings, you know, I think our initial impression was Buildings D and E, you know, we had hoped that maybe they could angle those to one another so they weren't a big, long, flat structure. But we heard that that was looked at, but it wasn't practical. You know, and that's, that's one thing.
I think there's a couple of other things that took away from your report. There's one about just having sort of locations and styles of furniture, bike racks and all of that. We're going to hear that next.
I hope we will, yeah, I hope we will. So, it'll also help make it humorous, you know, bring it down to a humorous angle.
No, I, you know, appreciate the work you've got on this and that you're willing to cooperate with the designer. I think you've come up with, you know, some definite beneficial changes.
Well, thanks, yeah, I mean, yeah. I think another thing that wasn't exactly said, but I believe maybe the original plans had this ridge of this roof here or this apparent ridge is actually the end of a shed that drops down to a walkway. But, you know, I think that was actually at the height of the, of these other ridges and just bringing that down helps.
I'm assuming from a structural point of view, so there's a thought about this level.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, I think.
Those are my questions.
This is more to Jim, but I'll clarify after I may even corroborate. I just was wondering if you could provide a little more detail. You spoke of field stone for the wall material, but obviously we have a retaining wall and then we also have the veneer stone collating kind of for the concrete. If I remember at Design Route, we kind of expressed it being that, like using a field stone round as a veneer stone for the concrete section, maybe we're not jive with the, let, we didn't want to recreate the field and hold New England's foundation wall and we kind of thought that. So, I just wondered.
Not around and stuff, edge stuff.
Yeah, or just something that doesn't try to, I just wondered if you could add a little more about that.
Yeah, we're getting that process, you know, where you go to plenty of quarters and, you know, they've got great display, they've got stone, they're fashionable in terms of veneers and they turn corners. So, we're getting, we're representing here, I call it field stone. It's not meant to be the broadly beched stone, the field stones have got shuffled out for the plaza paint and they're usually flat and they're kind of laid up and stuff. So, that's as far as we are in, the stone we heard.
Yeah. Yeah, just architecturally, I'm stressed with me, I'm trying to recreate a foundation wall of stone and then it's like a kind of a little bit modern thing or.
From a site perspective, we did like that idea quite a bit. We'll show a little bit later in terms of sidewalks, provide some variety, those clean lines. We're glad that idea quite a bit.
Thanks.
Sure. So, is it coffee or coffee shop? Do you offer the drive-through or was that just, it was just to help to deal with traffic?
I think it had to do more with your planning than anything we had to say. But we're, we're very much endorsing that there's no drive-through.
It came more out of the, I think some of your, your work and stuff versus I think the design.
Mr. Ford? We were not committed, we, people suggested we were not awfully committed to the coffee shop, not the coffee shop.
You're not committed, you don't.
No, we won't have a drive-through because it just creates a lot of questions about the.
The lines. I think the line is created.
I think we solved a lot by, I don't know, kind of, Mr. Ford had raised some issues and I think either of ourselves have seen it in the rest of the community. I think that just maybe not simplifying the access and clearing entrances is a good problem. It also incidentally reduces the drift.
I could add, but there were a number of, you know, unanswered questions, you know, not everything was figured out. So, for example, the wave finding signage, you know, we hope maybe we'll see some more specifics on that. Some of the other, some of the other things like the specifics of the, of the papers and that type of thing.
Sidewalk and plantings and that.
Yeah, right, yeah. That wasn't all specified, like I said, it was kind of a mood board and that was.
I appreciate the collaboration between the proponent and designer. Appreciate the work you did.
Thank you.
So, again, my name is Jonathan Ford, I'm a civil engineer with the Horsey Witten Group. Registered professional engineer in Massachusetts. My colleague Alan Digger, landscape architect, also with the Horsey Witten Group in case planting, specific planting and landscapes questions come up. What I'd like to do before going through a summary of the periodic comments we received, go through three things. Talk a little bit more about how folks will move around the site, take a step back, look a little bit further outside the site. See how folks will move around, whether they're in a car, walking, wheelchair, bicycle, other perhaps. Talk about stormwater drainage and then go into a little bit of the evolution of our character landscape of moving from the mood board into a little bit more detail. So, this graphic shows slightly backed out, shows our proposed layout of Buildings A through F with the existing condition aerial photo underneath. So, we can start to see, if you move forward a little please, where the existing curb cuts are and the existing crosswalks are. I think it's important for us to start there and understand how folks move through the site now and so we can understand what we're proposing to change. So, we're highlighting the existing curb cuts that when you arrive by car, you're moving in with curb cuts that are aligned with curb cuts on the west lot in two locations. And that's how the pedestrian crosswalks also align, along with the one kind of release valve to the east of New Driftway where you can see where currently the building at. So, I think without seeing those together, it's hard to see how some of those are shifting slightly or aligning with their current location if you move forward a little. So, showing in orange highlighting the proposed curb cuts. So, starting from the furthest north, we're consolidating really through the site circulation strategic as well as through signage, that MBTA parking access is expected to come through that curb cut. So, that's aligned exactly with the curb cut on the other side of Old Driftway. So, that you would move through, those are the parking spaces that on the zoning plan shown earlier are dedicated for MBTA overflow as well as to move into the east lot, which is the majority of the spaces for MBTA from New Driftway. And the pedestrian crosswalks proposed, those locations shown in orange, aligning for folks that would park in those MBTA parking spots in the east lot for folks that live here that could walk even through the plaza and cross safely to the platform. So, these other two curb cuts, starting with the furthest south, so that's a shift of the existing curb cut to the south to align with, as Jim mentioned earlier, South Lane. That would really be through signage and if folks get to know the site, whether you live in Buildings B and E and are entering the underground parking or upgrade parking, I should say, or the same as Buildings C or moving to the parking on Center Way for commercial. We have signage there, but I don't know what exactly would say, the shops this way, the detail this way. We haven't prepared specific wave finding yet, but we know it's critically important. And the center curb cut, well, before I move on, so the main crossing location again aligns with kind of the center of gravity, the center of where people are moving, that you would cross here to that existing corner. Whereas the center curb cut proposed is solely for those who live in Buildings B and C. So, these would be detailed to have the curb cut, you drive in upgrade. This one is more of a village condition where you drive up and cross the sidewalk. More of a residential entry for the sidewalk pedestrian experience takes precedence. So, we don't expect folks to be moving back and forth by car to either of these curb cuts. Really, that is designed to happen where we show the MBTA parking access. As for Building F, the shift, so these are folks, you can come right in or right out and they would commit into this a little bit more detail later, or left in to the shifted access that could access really anything that's proposed here, the east lot spaces or Building F. And this is solely.
But no left turn out.
Correct. And this is solely right in, right out as proposed. And that was based on feedback you received. On this slide, I also want to make sure to point out, you know, this is a village condition. Things are constrained, so we want to talk about trash loading zones. Each building is designed to have a trash enclosure, so the solid board fence properly screened that could be accessed off of the street by a garbage truck. So, those locations up here, the trash truck could pull directly in and back out. There is a loading zone for commercial loading in the back of Building A. And there is a dumpster proposed here next to Building D, so for easy pickup and coming back out. One thing that's not shown in this plan that is a revisional date for future plans is adding another dumpster location off of Building E.
So, that's not how the residents get trash through the company, are they all just getting it out?
I don't know if we had the operations within the buildings specifically worked out for how one would get trash to the dumpster. I think the expectation is they're most overlooked in here, the stair and elevated floors. Do you need me to do that, but I don't want to answer for our acceptance.
No, they're here, trash sheets or.
I don't.
We haven't put those in yet, but we're going to consider putting those in because it makes it easier to be able to answer trash.
So, pointing out loading zones, we have proposed several of the parking spaces, the parallel parking spaces on Old Driftway in this location, so closest to Buildings A and B, the restricted hours for loading. We respect after the commuter rush, but still in the morning, so it's not conflicts with other uses happening throughout the day. So, for any frequent zone loading and that would be managed. So for any frequent loading, that would be managed by building A and B on site, to happen at those times so as to not get in the way. But the loading zone off the street would be for smaller trucks behind building A. We also provide a loading zone for buildings D and E located there right next to the link, so that's access to both of those buildings.
Are you saying the parallel street parking is not for like retail parking, it's per truck?
We're saying that two to three of those parking spaces might be restricted, say between nine and 11:00 in the morning or something like that to be loading.
There won't be trucks parked there all day long?
Not at all. I did want to point out at this stage, and David at this stage being able to get into this in a little more detail, we know there have been questions that have come up about circulation and central four one ways. I think from our perspective, we've designed the, for example, where you have heading parking on both sides of Center Way. We want these spaces to feel as much like a pedestrian permanent street as possible, but they are designed for safe backing in and out on both sides of Center Way as well as North Road. So from our perspective, we believe that this is a slow speed environment and that making those one way, especially when they're detailed design, will widen up to dominate two-way may be counterproductive to safety and folks finding their way around the site. We propose through wayfinding proper decal, that folks can find their way to where they're going. So perhaps David will get into that a little bit later in more detail. If you move forward. So we wanted to talk, we heard a lot about ADA access. It's important on all of our projects. This is a trickier site given the topography and the number of uses that are coming together. So those blue lines, and we show the location of ADA parking spaces, that those are rectangles, squares. Each of those blue lines represents an ADA compliant sidewalk with adequate width and slope to provide access. So we wanted to point out that the majority of the site is made up of accessible route that coincides with the general route and that especially to get to the plaza, detail spaces that either from a spot that we designated among the parallel spots, closest to the plaza, or from the back from Center Way, that you can access, there is a slope, the existing tree lawn, that would be proposing some stair cut-throughs, but the general route would be that way or around from the other side or from the back from Center Way. And that for folks parking, we're proposing bicycle parking as well in convenient locations. We understand that's critical and they would be sharing pedestrian crosswalk locations we talked about earlier. The one place, this dashed white line, where there would be a stair cut-through that's not ADA accessible from the center of the site, and that's really kind of a somewhat private space between buildings B and C for the parking access anyway. So that is more about getting around the site. I think moving to stormwater drainage and I'll try to be concise. Moving until it's like an immediate. So we talked a lot about character and materials that reflects the character of the design committee, the design guidelines and requirements. I think we've taken a step forward from a mood board, but we're not specifying exact favors quite yet. It's something we're still working on. But the point being, taking a cue from the recent existing streetscape improvements that come on brick pedestrian scale, street lighting with concrete is what we're looking to do. So what you see here is areas that are shaded purple are reflecting the character of the adjacent streetscape improvements, so being a combination from brick or paver banding with concrete pedestrian scale of street lighting. So those would be those kind of combination areas, including Old Drift Way and the back of Center Way. Spending a lot of focus in the center in pink on the plaza, so that would be almost entirely the favors, much more special in terms of the materials and the expression of the design. And then the green areas would be a more typical room finish concrete sidewalk that we provide out of the landscape planting.
And where do you make the connection between, on Old Drift Way, where does sort of the sidewalk integration happen with what's existing and what you're proposing? Where's your limited work at the sidewalk?
So we're proposing new parallel parking spaces, so the sidewalk along the entire frontage would be rebuilt, would be new essentially. In the property line, you can see about there, the building slightly set back, so that's new sidewalk that would connect from the crosswalks here to our property line, through the other edge, which is blocked by that.
And that's a new curb cut there on the south lane?
Correct.
So going to the, I don't know the direction of it, to the south. Are you, are you just doing radius and you're stopping there?
That is the current proposal.
The sidewalk here exists.
And so is what you're doing there picking up what that has? I don't even know what it has.
Yeah, let's look at the aerial photo. So the connection now is via that existing sidewalk, so we connect right to it there so we can get across the street as we do now.
And that sidewalk's just all concrete?
Correct.
But on the other side, it's going to be brick and concrete?
Correct.
Which is what you have in the subject, that what you do with the.
Right. They said that sort of the continuity dimension.
All right. All right, if you go back to where we were. If you move forward one. Okay, so we're going to talk about the landscape design. I've highlighted a few areas here, again, Old Drift Way and the proposed plaza are really the focal points of the experience we did as you arrived to the site, folks living here, not just passing through, but folks that whether they live here or they want to come here and sit in the plaza, sit in a bench on Old Drift Way, which was wonderful feedback we received from the designs review committee to widen that up, add some benches, add some more special planting so that the Old Drift Way pedestrian experience is well shaded. We're working through that with town and the landscape comments. We also want to point out the importance of screening our neighbors and understanding they haven't been shown on the plans yet or working out what an appropriate fence in the door, some type of evergreen screening for those edges, both south of us and to the north. So those are shown as purple lines and there's an area where we've been asked for more information in our minutes of putting that together, what those cross-sections would be. What I show here highlighted in green, that's our stormwater management approach. So our intent is to manage stormwater. We believe we meet the regulations of town and state for this site as a redevelopment site, but to use the landscape as much as we possibly can with fire retention systems. So filter stormwater runoff accepted from the pavement, have shallow planted depressions that will filter and infiltrate, and those are highlighted in green, and as much as we possibly can design them to be functional parts of the landscape to help it to be static, so it must look like engineered features. So we propose several of those on the site, including through the plaza, so you could kind of move through these planted experiences that might bring inside water when we through them. Moving forward. Typical materials.
Can you just go back to that question? How does that tie into kind of stormwater management already there now?
Great question, yes. So this right now is entirely paved parking with an underground system of catch basins and pipes. So our proposal is essentially to reroute so that the site slopes basically from east to west, top to bottom on this page, to pick up the parking area that we aren't changing essentially and route it safely around. Take the pipe that, and catch basins that are here, and that's shown with these green lines, those are underground pipes that would pick up in this location runoff from the parking that we're not changing, and then these systems would overflow during larger storm events into that green line, underground pipe, and discharge essentially very close to where they, thus occurring.
So you're essentially eliminating stormwater management in the area you're developing and you're rerouting the area you're not developing but integrating into your management?
Correct. Is that right? Correct. So we have a listed later, I think one of the few remaining here review comments that we still need to work through is an understanding, we believe we've met the stormwater regulations, especially for a redevelopment site, in picking that runoff from that area up and routing it around. That runoff now is treated by an existing water quality unit underneath the west lot, which our clients don't own. So the sense of which we are verifying the condition of that off-site system as well as not treating runoff from the east lot, safely routing it around. I think we're very close to working through that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So typical materials, we moved one step past the mood boards like that and starting to show really base upon what we heard, traditional New England character, but adding some modern elements, especially from where the site is concerned, whether it be with clean lines. I really like that suggestion a lot. That's the site wall, not that that is exactly what's going to happen, but that's the general idea. Different types of materials, so some walls may be concrete, maybe next to your dumpster enclosure where you don't see them. Majority of walls would be a versalot block type wall and we would pick the appropriate color. And then special walls would be something like that in here that would go with the architecture. So we're still working through that. I think our typical materials in terms of places to sit, bike racks, simple, functional, durable, but we certainly want it to fit the aesthetic, so somewhat straightforward. The lighting fixture that we settled on is this one, that's the proposed fixture. So this is the exact same size and scale as the fixtures that just went in in adjacent neighborhood, pedestrian scale. This one we've been keeping kind of as a modern aesthetic, cleaner lines, it's not the ornate fixture that's there, but it's the same scale in height. And we think not.
All LED?
Yes. Yes. And the possibility in the plaza and this may come in the future of amplifying that space with a little bit more special lighting. So now that I think we have received comments on the fixture, we're in the putting photograph of the plan together, so it's a way to begin that. Typical planting, and I won't get out of my league here with specific planting, but our intent is understanding water conservation and the importance of being sustainable in town. We're not proposing irrigation on site. And as we move through the more detailed planting, landscape design, we think it's necessary in certain areas, we want to be sure we're using water to make that happen. But we're not proposing irrigation, we're proposing as much native plants as we possibly can that can be drought tolerant, which might require sort of different aesthetic in the summer. Those are the events consisting with the constituent goals. So those were the three pieces I wanted to move through. The technical review summary, we very much appreciate Merrill Engineers comments. We submitted plans and drainage speculations on March 14th. They responded with a letter on March 27th and we appreciated those comments, revised our plans and speculations accordingly. We submitted plans, they were April 18th. I have their letters due to the meeting first in front of me and I think, we have a list of detailed clarifications, which we would always have and minor adjustments. We talked about loading, we provided snow storage locations on the plan, but again, understanding of the village center, both for the town's vision that there may need to be a lot of snow, some more advanced management perhaps off-site or other arrangements for snow storage. And we think if your questions, talk a bit about the runoff from the east lot, which I think we are still working through, but we believe we're in a pretty good place in terms of civil site. Landscape, we appreciate the town's comments and went through those with Karen, I believe that was last week, in some of the issues, we're continuing to explore our existing street trees on Old Drift Way and whether some of those would be preserved rather than view the grading required for the increase. So we're looking into that. A good suggestion, reuse existing grant curve on site, which we will stop pile and reuse as long as it's in good condition. And again, a list of additional detailed clarifications and adjustments as we move forward towards construction plans. We believe we've addressed comments from the fire department in meeting with deputy chiefs several times in terms of access and a list of their comments to be incorporated into the building design. And that is a summary of site civil. I think at this point handing it over to you, unless there are questions, then I would like to proceed to David Black with the traffic.
Other questions? Can we ask a few?
Good evening, Kate Tomler from Merrill Engineers. I actually think Jonathan did a great job in summarizing what the outstanding concerns I have on. As far as the existing TA lot, when the project is completed, that portion of, I'll call it the site, because there is work going on, will be just 25% total suspended solids, but they are providing 90% for a portion of the site as well. So I requested a weighted total suspended solids, which is certainly an applicable, an appropriate thing to look at. As far as the other items, he was right on as far as summarizing himself. We're basically waiting for additional information.
I'm just looking at, I think we're sort of, it sounds, I'm just, from your last letter, I was just making sure we sort of addressed everything. It seems like maybe under the additional detailed clarifications and stuff, there's a bunch of line items.
Yes, I suspect.
So many data rounds. Okay. The two questions for you, just on the civil part of it, the water use and water capacity, I forget who, but somebody addressed or talked about doing some kind of mitigation on the water and the water capacity, has it been sort of announced as the water capacity and what's kind of happening to make that capacity build?
So we did look at the water, effective water use and demand, and I think John, you could address, you and your company had discussions with the town?
We did. We came to the agreement in terms of payment to the town for mediation, did a study on II work to be done as well, so there's going to be a payment made, but we did identify certain areas where that could be applied. In addition, the town, we have a board with some other projects, apply for a mask works grant, which was awarded. So that was part of our negotiation with the town, what we did.
So I'm just going back to the I and I, the stuff you identified, was it essentially sort of a one-for-one kind of capacity concept? Is that what you did, was it two-for-one or?
It was, I'll remind you, going a little bit beyond in terms of like a percentage.
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen or twenty percent.
And then on the sewer connection, has that capacity issue been worked out in terms of where you're connecting, where it's going to?
We provided a memo to the town, so will sewer department, trying to be this, kind of acceptable, and provide a letter, I believe, writing to you Karen.
Yeah, there has to be some final coordination on sewer issues and I don't know what I talked about today, who was going to talk about, or someone. talked to Will today, he didn't talk to us, or even, I don't know that occurred, but it's, there'll be some final coordination of sewer in the next month.
So I'd like to provide a little bit more detail, similar to the civil site peer review, we'll add implicit comments, many of Rich's work are detailed oriented, and we'll make sure it absolutely, meaning the whole comments that we do, like I mentioned, capacity gap to the bus station, which is, but that's not a problem, we went into some monitoring on site, looked at the capacity in that line, even the most concerning line is at something like 19%. So that wasn't a problem.
So that's been resolved?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't have anything right now.
Is that all?
I think they answered.
Just everything that you have put on here, you're just waiting to get it back in that list?
Yes.
So, Stephen Wilson?
Yeah, I think so. I think one thing you had on the list, Peter, was a question about the number of units, and was, you know, sort of left it to make a decision on the over 16 sort of concept, the number of units per 40,000 square feet. And I think we heard a lot about the public benefit components that you're proposing yourself. Just want to make sure I, we addressed that.
Well, I think you did. I mean, what I heard was, in the sense I got, was that it had been addressed sufficiently.
And where are we actually, what's the number?
In your opinion?
No, no, for the number of units per 40.
Oh, per 40.
Yeah.
I think they're just like, 16.04, I think.
Oh, okay.
No.
I'm assuming we're going round down, at 16.04.
Trucking.
Round down, trucking, just 16. Just one other, we received late today, which is in all your planning or folders, comments from the DPW. And most of them, they have pretty much already addressed, and Vanessa's comments, and some of the other DPW comments. We'll send it out electronically tomorrow.
There was one other comment, I'm not sure who made it, that it had to do with coal flame on Old Driftway, maybe that was on traffic, so we can put it there.
It was on DPW.
Yeah.
You came in, you just said John, by yourself.
I did, yes.
Thank you, sir.
And I apologize for my late arrival, I was actually waiting for your time. That would have been a long wait. It's very embarrassing for transportation. We drive a lot.
You're here now.
I'm here now. My name is David Black, I've worked the last 18 years for the HBC in Boston, for our community transportation engineer, environmental scientist, with 1,400 staff in the city of Oxford, East Coast, we're headquartered in the water. I was with you on Van Tansden, I agree with your advice, study, but we have done. The study has been updated in response to the comments from Mr. Durk. And some of those we already talked about this evening. I think the most significant change is the elimination of the drive-through coffee shop, which addressed several of the issues that Mr. Durk raised. There were other, there were other comments about methodology and sources of data, et cetera. I think we've come to a really balanced place with all of those. The study has been updated, you will have received the updated study, we'll go through the results in detail, and I would like to say that the relatively lenient impacts that we've dealt previously are slightly less with the change in the programs. So, there are still, I think, a number of outstanding conditions or comments that relate to the site plan, some of which John has touched on, and others that are ongoing. I think maybe it'd be worthwhile just running through, I have a dozen of those, so that we can give you a responsive status check on what we feel on that. Can we get to maybe John's site access plan? Yeah, it's fine, it actually doesn't matter which one we use. So, there were, let's say, we have the drive-through coffee shop that has addressed certain factors, we looked at that very hard to resolve, and I think we managed to resolve it. So I think it really has enhanced the budget to take that control out. There was some concern about potential conflicts for trucks servicing on North Way, on North Road. I think that, we feel that those can be addressed by restricting hours when those larger trucks are able to service the retail. Other management methods, John mentioned the idea of maybe co-conan parking spaces, or anticipate that it is a co-conan, if it is. I think also it's a core advisor, in some of the on-street space in Old Driftway, part-time loading, they wouldn't be permanently loading sites, but they could be loading their own such, or that may happen, that some of that works with other parking policies in time.
Those, would that be policed by the police? Those spaces, those public spaces, right?
Those are in public spaces.
So we'll have to put whatever restrictions behind.
We'll have to put whatever restrictions we want, and you may want to have it unloading from 9 to 11, and no, actually no loading on peak traffic hours between 7 and 9, and 46.
The biggest challenge probably is people aren't on the train, particularly six, seven, seven. All kids.
Dropped off, right?
No, I don't get dropped off. But there's a huge line of cars, that's the sort of item that we're waiting for the train to show up.
I was assuming that you probably want to also time limit the party, so that I'm pretty much, you know, a lot of children, there's a lot of steps. There were also some comments by the North Drive, with about why potentially conflict here with the parking and traffic flowing through North Road, that could be changed to right-hand parking as opposed to right-hand parking. We feel that the parking is actually much safer for that situation. Sometimes the parking involves newer dramatic diversity, and it's, you know, in a way, it's a bit difficult. And I think, you know, right-hand parking is kind of the standard, and I think people understand what it works, and certainly that's been important in terms of handling the session. It's clear to them what's going to happen. I think it was John said, you know, that some of the old cars, the cannons and the like that.
For the traffic flow, just aside, is it really generous in terms of, I think about all the issues you mentioned.
Yeah, John, what is, do you have to mention?
Sure, so North Driftway, you're asking for it. It's typical, as you were finding, a hotel parking lot, so it's an 18-foot long parking space, 24-foot wide aisle, so there's no concession, automatic, it's all private, shorters.
It's not.
No, it's not.
One of the things we sometimes do is suggest that the strip should not be 18 feet long, that would be maybe 17, 16, because it doesn't increase the driver to, or the road in this spot.
If you have to move that, can we review the parking?
This is a traffic.
If we do, the parking program, they fully just park it in parallel, I think for the employees, they're making a complete business.
There was, there was some concern expressed, still, some outstanding concern like moving at the apparent exit through this parking area, that it might attract commuters to actually come through the exit that way. Our sense is that it's not going to be, there's not going to be a face to manage of that, but we're specifically saying that you would like to restrict or eliminate, or straight out that direction.
Yeah, can we avoid facing that?
I think we heard that last time from Rob, I think I remember personally.
Are you going to look at the traffic channel, signaling and the timing on it, does that need to change?
At Old Driftway, there was certainly a request, mitigation, that, and I think Mr. Durk has suggested that that be done after 60% or 80% occupancy availability. It's a bit pointless to do an argument, it doesn't suck there, but as a follow-up, it makes sense to check the time and make sure it's consistent with the industry standards for signal placements, so that I care. So, then there was, John mentioned this, there was a suggestion that the circulation on side lane, center way, and north road, that would be made one-way. We have some concerns about that, to be honest, because we think it's going to make access for the core parking in the middle and center way, much more difficult for people to get to, because it will be too, they will only be able to enter outside lane and exit on both ways. So if they, if they missed a spot, or they went to the back, or they've come in on North Road from Old Driftway, that really, or really being forced into a circulation, is that the parking itself is designed to a lot of its collective and for, you know, banking and all those parking spaces.
Also, while that parking on center way is a detailed part, so, I mean, in terms of, I mean, sometimes these desirable, you know, they miss the turn.
I think what would happen is if somebody doesn't find the space that they want, that they pass on, that will go better, they'll probably exit North Road and go to Old Driftway and certainly run again. You're actually putting some of the internal circulation onto the, so that we see our sense on that. Oh, there was also a suggestion that the opponent should put in flashing pedestrian crossing lights, activated at the three crosswalks on Old Driftway. We are very supportive of flashing crosswalk signs, but we don't think it is prudent to put in three locations, because it would create somewhat of a confusing situation to have this road. They're too closely created. If there's going to be one, I think probably investigation would be at North Road intersection, because that's the dominant connection to the station, pedestrian entrance to the station.
Yeah, cars come both directions and alleys, yeah.
And another, there was another mitigation suggestion, I believe these came from the Traffic Loop Revelations Committee, to install the radar-activated speed signs on both, both Old Driftway and New Driftway. You know, it's something that we can't say there's something bad about that, I'm just not sure.
We discussed a little further, we all see in the meatwork, Old Driftway was, was stored on, they need to, so they have that kind of sign, so probably explore that more.
I mean, on, on the new Driftway.
Yeah, on the new Driftways.
I think Old Driftway, especially by adding parking, building, without pedestrian walkability, the pure design of relationship of the street should have those slowed down more than...
It would certainly feel a little like that to on streets, or just connect the local, the operators.
Settle training.
So I think, you know, there were other suggestions, Mr. Durk has suggested other retention mitigation, road safety always, the road crew, joining the mass, developer or the management to become a mass rights employer, first out of that program, so that, you know, the Stan, who are able to take back some of the programs of past beauty sponsors. There was also discussion of other off-site mitigation, and I think it's fair to say, we're probably not going to finalize all this in this discussion for the meantime.
Oh, there was one, you got to the off-site one.
Yeah, without going too deep, until we're asked to look at, we're looking at other intersections close by here, there was some issues with the traffic and safety concerns. So we're absolutely open to that, so I think we're just trying to work with the town on what exactly that means, you know, sort of, it's still the project across.
We have to talk about that.
Yeah, we have a response on that, and we do have David, Melissa Witt working with us.
Right. Jeff Durk from Vanessa.
So good evening, Jeffrey Durk.
I think I would like to look up, so that the audience can...
Absolutely, yeah. But I'll take my back.
I just wanted to say one thing, I wanted to acknowledge my project in the account that you made, I was done, I get the easy bit, and she's first, that's the status.
Isn't it always the easy? Well, again, good evening, Madam Chair, for the record, my name is Jeffrey Durk, I'm a partner with Vanessa Associates, and we're the town's traffic consulting consultant on this project. So I think as you, you heard a very good summary of kind of where we are with respect to the traffic review, so we've, at this point, as of, I think, kind of off last night, we've issued three letters on this project. The applicant has been very responsive, I think similarly what you've seen in the architectural piece of it. Each and every question or comment we've had with respect to our review of the traffic, as well as the site plan, they've been responsive to all of those. You received the last response letter, it was dated May 7th, so the letter that you probably received this morning was with respect to our review of that. There are no outstanding items relative to the traffic study. I think we had a technical, very technical comment relating to the trip generation calculations, and I won't bore you with that. But suffice to say, I think from our standpoint of looking at the impacts of this project, I think, it's not very often that I can say, I think they've overstated the impacts. We would have approached the trip generation a little bit differently, and would have resulted in some lower traffic levels, so I think if you kind of throw the technical comments aside with respect to the vehicle occupancy ratio, at the end of the day, what we'd say is that they provided a fair and balanced analysis of the traffic impacts, and what you see with respect to those impacts is that really the only location that has pronounced impact is the road re-secure ground development, which already has some issues. And so, of course, if we have backups at that intersection, we add more traffic to it... And so, of course, if we have backups at that intersection, we add more traffic to it, the traffic that can't get through there, still won't be able to get through there, so we have a little bit increase in our doing. But it's not, it's marginal at best. And so that's where I think, as you've heard, we asked the applicant to commit to conduct some of the road safety, and I think we talked about that last time, um, certainly, uh, the applicant is willing, as you've heard, committed to, uh, doing some level of study there, which we could just rate. This isn't a problem if the applicant, um, has created that publication, but I think it's, it's perfectly, um, the fact that they're willing to work on scope of work at the application for this study, which we think we can, um, end up with a document that actually be very beneficial, not only to the town, but also to the state in looking at, you know, how that, uh, runabout, uh, making, we can figure out some enhancements to that, is a good thing, and that becomes a result of the logic. David had mentioned some of the traffic mitigation items, and we'd asked him to look at some specific things, commit to some improvements, they committed to all of those. So I think from that standpoint, we're at a point where we can prepare some draft, uh, conditions of approval, recommendations that will kind of encapsulate all those, the applicant can then look at that and comment on those. So we're at a, we're at a point where we can start to put those things together. Some of those will have to do with operational aspects of the site, as you've heard, this idea of the loading and deliveries and times that that will take place in on-site management. Uh, we can encapsulate all of those in conditions, again, that way the applicant can kind of comment on those as well and consider those. David had also mentioned some of the things from the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee, so we did, as, as a part of our last review letter, we tried to provide some context to that as well, and I hope there's members of that, of that committee here, so I don't want to speak for them, that can kind of go through some of the thought process and some of those items. And, and we do agree with the comments that they had. Now, with respect to the magnitude of the impact of some of the areas they identified, we tried to also equip those in context as well. So I think as you're kind of thinking through some of the items there, the one-way circulation that was mentioned, so it would be south lane entering one-way, and then traveling along the centerway out to north road, that was kind of the one-way route that they were talking about. Now, one of the reasons why, um, they were talking about that had to do with the fact of this intersection offset. Now, that's been something that had, um, we've raised that as part of our initial review as well. It, it's, you know, ideally, this idea of having these aligned is a good idea, and that's why you see it with the existing conditions that's there. So now what we're creating is two offset intersections, so that is creating some concern for us. So focusing on the center offset that's there, the traffic at, for that center driveway is very, very limited. It's really only serving a portion of the traffic over the empty garage from these two buildings. We're not that concerned with that offset, just because the traffic volume is a little bit. The offset between these two is a little bit more concerning, and the reason, as you know, is because you've got a one-way entrance here to the lot, to the lot with the majority of people parking, and then everything exits here, so that offset is a little bit more concerning. Again, our initial review on it was that it's limited in terms of its additional traffic there, but if you look at the way the committee's looking at it, one of the reasons why they suggested the one-way is because that offset there, if you make this one-way entry, then you don't have exiting traffic trying to come out here, at the same time you can have exiting traffic coming out of the parking lot. So you can kind of see how that thought process from the committee kind of went through. We, we, our comment is that we, we don't disagree with the comment that decided to do that. We also don't want to have recirculation, we want to minimize recirculation. Two-way traffic allows us to make sure that we minimize recirculation with the light, as you've heard, as you're going through and trying to find parking space. We don't want people to come back onto Old Driveway. So a consideration that we had suggested would be keep the two-way circulation, and then to the extent that, you know, the applicant would need to look at this, whether you just made this enter only just in this piece here, allow two-way circulation within the site, that does address that some, to some extent. Because if the traffic isn't exiting, then you still have two-way circulation around this site. So it's basically just, please do not enter signs here internal to the site, so people can't exit, but you maintain two-way circulation within the site. So we think that's a, it's a valid comment, and the new committee that lead the applicant should look at, and it's really related to this offset that's happening there, as well as the pedestrian, I think they were concerned with pedestrian circulation. One of the comments we had, and the applicant did address this, is they are planning to do full co-working overlay of Old Driveway, basically from New Driveway all the way to Stockton Road. So that's going to be a brand-new pavement service, as it should be, given the extent of what they're doing out there. This is a good illustration of looking at, today you've got this left turn lane, obviously it makes no sense in future conditions, so the entire road needs to be repaved. What we've said to them is we needed, or we suggested, they need to develop a signed pavement marking plan. That signed pavement marking, marking plan will show you what the new markings will be, that will also address some of the signs waiting for the loading zones, so you get to see all of that. That really should be a part of the site plan stuff that you ultimately endorse, so that you've got that all in there. I did want to mention one thing with respect to that plan, and one I think is essential, is, um, pedestrian, uh, pedestrian access to circulation is very important, and we're glad that they're showing all of those connections. But the one thing I want to say is there's too many crosswalks here. So, in particular, this crossing here, now that there's the offset, we would never do that. Now you have a crossing between two intersections. So again, that, that's not something that's really conducive to a safe pedestrian environment, because what ends up happening here is that if you've got a vehicle turning left in here, the visibility of that pedestrian crossing street is very difficult. So, that's why that signed pavement marking plan will flush all of itself. This crosswalk probably should be eliminated here. They've got a mid-block crossing here, you know, they talked about those flashing beacons, so as we start to look at where those crossings want to be, we don't disagree with what they've shown, but we think it needs a little bit more thought. Then they flushed out with that signed pavement marking plan. And then you probably have the crossing beacon at this location here, and then at this location here, so you've got the two locations sufficiently separated apart.
Do you have some questions? The black lines in between those two orange?
Yes.
Is that actually an entrance? I thought that was.
No, this is going the way, so this is.
That's going the way.
But there's a crossing that's there today, so.
But, okay, so the crossing that's orange and the crossing that's orange. The black one's going the way.
It's existing.
It's existing.
The line is going the way.
So what I'm suggesting is that this crossing here is not an ideal location, given the offset. It's basically between two intersections, you don't want that. This crossing probably stays because it is that spine of the pedestrian crossing to get to the, where the parking lot is, but it's a, I mean, it's, it's lined up with the driveway, it's almost a mid-block, that's probably a good location to have to push, using the flashing lights there. Um, and then probably in Northman as well, would make a lot of sense. So we, we think that that, you know, is a good thing. We need that signed pavement marking plan to flush all of itself, and that should be a part of the site plan stuff that you ultimately endorse. The loading area here, I think you had seen from the, uh, one of the comments from the new committee, was that this crossing here, they want to make sure there's not large trucks in the loading zone. A large truck, we'd go right through that crosswalk. But that's where it gets to these hours of loading, so if there's a large truck that needs to go in there, it certainly can be accommodated, but you don't want it at the same time that commuters are going to train where that crosswalk would be, so again, we can look into that. And then lastly, as you looked at building up here, you heard the comments with respect to that. I think one of the things, you know, this plan, the arrows that are shown on this plan don't really truly represent what they're proposing for access, and I think that's one of the things that needs to be clarified. This is in only, in my understanding, from the traffic analysis, this is a right-turn enter only. The left-turn entry is not allowed there. This is an exit only, and it's limited to right turns only, so the arrows are a little misleading on that. So.
But you can't take a left turn on Driveway.
Their analysis did not, their traffic analysis was not based on that. It was basically a entrance only here by way of a right turn, exit only here by way of a right turn. So that was very limited. So that gets to, I, I think there was a concern on this concrete matter. We think that that's, you know, it's a valid point to be raised there, but we think with that limitation on the right turn, exiting only, that probably removes some of that potential for, if that to be as any significant level of customer traffic. So, we don't think it really needs to be redesigned, just something that the applicant can think about. That parking is vital to that retail building, obviously, and it needs to be kind of segregated in that sort of way. You know, anything that would restrict the building and pass through there, I think, um, just really degrades the, the value of that property.
Could I, could I just clarify on that? Because absolutely, the diagram is a little bit confusing. But the intent here, the intent of the large, orange arrow with the dashed arrow is to say that that is too great traffic. What we, the intent, what is intended here is what's shown by the smaller black arrows, that the, the ability to turn right in or out at both of those curbs, but only to make a left turn into the northern, sorry, the eastern one. I think, um, what they're trying to do there was recognize that, um, the people who are going to be patients at Billie Ed will need some flexibility to, to get in line, but we absolutely did not want to have the left turn right, um, for very reasons that they may pick up as this, uh, in the attraction, because to.
So you're saying there's two access barriers. There's the exception of a left turn.
There are two-way driveways, but, um, they have restricted turns. They're restricted to right in right eye only, which would, you know, the least conflicting movements, with the exception of allowing a left turn entry with the eastern driveway.
I'm not sure your traffic analysis was based on that.
I thought it was.
I don't think the traffic.
I don't know, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
But, um, everybody, one thing I do have to say, because it's pushing forward, and I'm going to continue with this, but we have, um, a continued public here, public hearing with special permit for accessory dwellings, so we will be, we need to continue with this and. I don't know, but they, and we might, I'm going to try to, um, say things a lot.
I must add, we're at a point, as I mentioned, just always ready to, um, provide suggestive conditions.
The only thing I would add to what you said, I agree, and it's, it's at Earl Horn, I would like the right side to be one-way in, you can circulate through those two parking lots, and then otherwise, I think that that's the best, in my opinion, okay? Just add that to the brand. All right, um, I'm going to open this up with a couple comments. Anybody in the public have anything that they would like to say for this? Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Swet, I live at six ninety-one Patchy Way, and I think this is a great project, in my own opinion, just because it's taking a vacant piece of land, and it's becoming something that adds tax dollars to the town. Living in North Situate, talk about a tale of two villages. You know, green bushes, becoming alive, great things happening. North Situate, no story, we're sitting there. I just think it's, to take an empty lot and the town that needs money now, I think is very good.
Anyone else? Any other comments from the board? Karen?
I would like to just ask one thing, it's just an idea, as, because it sounds like you're talking to the engineer down about the use of the backlot and all that. And it just occurs to me that, that backlot can be used for something like a weekend farmer's market, like a regional farmer's market and stuff, so if you're talking to them and trying to get concessions from them, one of them might be to consider having alternate uses there that could be of interest for now. Yeah, I, you know, not, obviously not during community hours and stuff, but, you know, a weekend, kind of regional farmer's market concept or something.
Definitely open up that possibility, um, in terms of, not, not for farmer's markets, in terms of other different things.
Yeah, just alternate uses is all I can ask.
Okay, um, there's a lot that needs to be done with Karen.
There is a lot that needs to be done, but they have, um, there, there aren't really that many comments left to be addressed in the engineering period view. They believe that they can get all the comments done and being addressed and back into period view, so that they would be available for the June thirteenth meeting. So I've written, um, a motion for continuance for the June thirteenth meeting at seven o'clock.
Okay, and you can wrap it up at that time? I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the use of special permit in the building, this is a void, it's a public meeting, June forty-seven Driveway, until June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen to seven P M, eighteen to be tied by afternoon until July twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Is this thing?
Thank you.
All members?
Aye, aye.
Thank you very much. You've done a, I think, you've done a good job. Your presentation was.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeffrey Braver Morris, George St. James Morris Engineering. With me is the property owner and applicant, Mark DiNoctrio. This is a continued public hearing for an accessory dwelling, twenty-five Man Hill Road. At the last meeting, we presented plans to you. The primary dwelling is located in front of the property. There's an existing barn on the property. The proposal here is to create a new accessory dwelling in the backyard. Mark would occupy the front house as his primary residence. The accessory dwelling would be occupied by his parents, currently his parents live in the front house, they've occupied that for close to fifty years. This brings the family back onto the property, allows everyone to stay there. The accessory dwelling consists of two bedrooms, it's approximately one thousand thirty feet square feet in size. It complies with all requirements of the bylaw meets all setbacks. The last meeting, I had heard two concerns from the board, which I believe I addressed in a revised plan. The revised plan has included a new septic system. The septic system here has been reviewed and improved by the board health. I had also heard some concern regarding drainage. The project does not trigger the stormwater bylot. There were no wetlands on the site, but what we proposed, is we proposed adding eight dry wells, which would be attached to the roof of the gardeners. I turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Actually, I think, I had been out and looked at the site, and it all flows downhill. And from actually the peak of Man Hill Road, it flows. And the day I went out there, the water coming off of, onto, I want to say, was incredible. So, is there any, where does the, the sump pump on that house exit the dwelling? There's a sump pump?
Yes.
And where does that water go? Does it head out the side and then downhill, or does it head toward the street?
Side.
Side? So it's flowing downhill and onto, um, Mr. Schumacher's property.
It hasn't been for the past thirty years.
I understand, but thirty years ago, there was no house there, so it didn't.
I'm well aware of that.
Right, so it didn't really make any difference in one sense, that it's flowing downhill and going wherever. But now, there is somebody there. And so, how can we resolve this so that we can all be good neighbors?
Sure, I mean, I think we could certainly redirect the hose toward the front of the site. You're not supposed to discharge onto a public street.
I understand that.
So, we can discharge it to the front of the site, um, but as you just said, water ultimately flows downhill. The Schumacher house is pretty new. I have done percolation tests on almost all the budding properties to this site. The issue out here is really with respect to groundwater and inside the air. All of the budding houses have, have septic, uh, not septic systems, they all have sump pumps in them, they all have high groundwater cables, groundwater was at thirty inches in the Schumacher site prior to that house being built. There's puddling on the DiNoctrio property as a result of the Schumacher house being built that never existed prior to this. Significant puddling there in the end. It's not on the Schumacher property. We can certainly redirect the hose in the, in Mark's willing to redirect the hose toward the front of the site, but ultimately, whether it's redacted, redacted, and redirected to the front of the site, the back of the site, the top of the site, the bottom of the site, it's all going to continue to run downhill, ultimately to the opposite side of the path where there's the wetland that receives the water.
And you're putting in, you've got, as soon as I walk out.
Correct.
Are you taking down walls so that there will be four bedrooms in Victorian, not even six or seven?
No, that's not a requirement that we're allowed.
But it is, I believe, a requirement. You're putting in a six-bedroom septic system.
Correct.
And there are actually, there are seven bedrooms in the Victorian, and you're adding two bedrooms. You're saying that you're going to divest. You're saying that you're going to divest the main house down to four bedrooms, are you?
Karen?
All right, so I spoke to the Board of Health late this afternoon, and they are required on this project to have a four-bedroom deed restriction for the primary dwelling, and a two-bedroom deed restriction for the accessory dwelling. They say that the Board, they say that the DEP doesn't make you remove walls, but they are only allowed to have a flow of six hundred sixty gallons per day. So if that flow increases, then that's a violation of permit from the Board of Health. So there has to be two individual deed restrictions for this, for the septic system, for the number of bedrooms, and they say if the flow is above, then that.
But who's going to check on the flow?
How do you check? How do you check on the flow?
That's rather easy to check on the flow.
Actually, bubbling up out of the ground, right?
No, the, the flow would be calculated by getting a copy of the water records provided by the Water Department. All of the waterfall coming into the site would obviously be covered with the plumbing. A deed restriction like this is extremely common. You do this on sites all over the town, the situate, this is not the only one that has a deed restriction on it in this town. It's a DEP-recognized policy, it was administered entirely through the Board of Health, and the Board of Health has approved it in this case.
I then have quite some conditions in here that we have to be provided a copy of the deed restriction prior to occupancy and permits, and.
And it's not a removable deed restriction?
It is not removable deed.
So, so who, to who's benefit, who's, it runs with the land?
Yes, it runs with the land.
Okay, so a due honor couldn't, couldn't undo the deed restriction?
No.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean they couldn't use those, build those bedrooms?
No, but again, the flow is restricted to, so if you want to add something.
If you're only designing a six-bedroom septic system, right?
Yes.
So you have, you know, twenty people in there, your septic system probably not going to handle anything, right?
Right, your septic system will probably be in failure, because I'm the Board of Health, tell me if you have greater capacity going through the septic system. So if you want to ultimately change this draft decision to make it more restrictive, then we can do that as we get there. You may want to do something a little bit more, as, they are putting infiltrators for the accessory dwelling, but you may monitor the sump pump from the primary dwelling, like Glenn said, can't go out on the road, it shouldn't be going to neighboring property, so it may have to be retained on-site at some point in time.
Can I ask a quick question, please? My house wasn't there. It was the groundwater, yeah.
It would keep running down now.
Right, so it's going in my basement, and I'm pumping it back out, and it's keeping going downhill. So what's the difference?
I, I understand that it is always drawn downhill. I, I do understand that, but right now.
When we first bought the house, our basement didn't fill up the water.
The house was constructed in eighteen, groundwater mislocation by a eighteen, groundwater mislocation, you know, is down twelve to eighteen inches typically. The property's across the street, which I did part tests on, we had groundwater of twenty-four inches, twenty inches. The Schumacher's property, I was involved in, we did test bits there, groundwater was at thirty-three inches. The property adjacent to that, the old Jim Brennan house, Seventh Avenue path, Eleventh Avenue path, we had groundwater, again, at twenty inches. This is a seasonal problem that is going to be here in perpetuity with all of this house. It's a, I'm not even going to say it's a problem, it's a condition. That's a condition and will be there. My house in that area, groundwater is at twenty inches, it's already there, we haven't any construction in the accessory dwelling. It's going to continue to. We can certainly redirect the groundwater, but during the wet periods, which during April, we had twenty-one days of rain.
Oh, I know that, I'm well aware.
It, it will continue to be wet. You're not going to be able to infiltrate the volume of water coming off of Man Hill on a single walk.
I guess I don't, I don't, I'd like to go back to the four bedroom versus seven, I don't see any need to modify the rooms and the walls and stuff, as long as we've got the deed restriction. If it was built in eighteen whatever, I don't know that I want people to go, you know, have to rip up, you know, an old, old house to, I have no idea what it looks like, but I don't see anything to do with that. I'm not characterful, yeah. So I would say I would be, I would be fine with a deed restriction, myself. The, the water, the only thing about the groundwater and, and sort of the pumping of the groundwater is that you've changed from groundwater to service water, right? That's, that's the diff, that's the difference when you ask the question about what happens, right? Because you've now made it service water flow, not a, it's not a groundwater flow anymore. So that's, that's.
There are no way to do it. There isn't.
I, I hear you, I hear you, I hear you, but that's, that's the difference, right? That's, that's, and, and our stormwater regulations really address, for the most part, they address service water flow, not groundwater flow, right? We don't, we don't have any, other than having appropriate, you know, distances from high groundwater, we don't really have any groundwater regulation at all. And Greg is right, that some of our regulations are, you can't dump water onto a public street, right? So, I don't know what we can do with something that's been a pretty distinct condition for, you know, thirty years or whatever. My only question, other question was really on the, the septic system itself. Does, does the grade here change anything in a way of, surface water, stormwater flow? Is it not concentrating anything anywhere, or?
No, I mean, the grade or the septic system is, does come up, the septic system, you know, will be around the septic system like you see elsewhere. But it doesn't change the direction of the contours, it doesn't change the direction of the flow, it doesn't add any crevices in previous service. If anything, you could potentially say that there's probably less runoff through the septic system because we're importing hundreds of yards of cement that now will have storage on within it.
But it's not increasing velocity?
No, it's not.
Okay. I guess those are, I mean, I think as, as long as the, as the Board of Public Health has said, okay, this is a six-bedroom septic system, and we know how it's going to be split up, and it's deed restricted that way, I think the enforcement piece of this, you know, for that of course, that's going to be up to the Board of Health.
Yes.
You know, the, the only other thing I would say is when we've done accessory dwellings, what we've said, because we've been building new accessory dwelling, and it created, you know, kind of the third floor that looks like it might end up being a bedroom, we have made changes there, we're building new stuff, right? To say, put trusses in there, whatever, so it doesn't be, kind of, a second bedroom. I think that's as far as we're going.
Oh, Ben?
Greg, on, on the plan, is the, in the existing conditions that are, that is underneath, is that, are those, are those trees actually, like, those are water on-site approximately, or they're just kind of placeholders?
The, the trees that are under the septic location?
Yeah.
Those, we shot those by surveys.
You did, okay.
Those are trees that we have.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think I raised this last time, that just obviously with the water issues, like, those, those trees there are, regardless of the sump pumps, they are dead, the trees will help attenuate stormwater, they will help take up groundwater and things like that, so. It looks like you added a tree line here where you're going to retain some of the existing vegetation over there.
Correct, yeah. The, the septic's are allowed to be within ten feet of the lot line, I think on that setback, we have close to thirty feet to the septic system. I want to say we're retaining close to fifteen feet of vegetation.
Okay. And what, there's some decent-sized trees and?
There are trees.
And then farther up towards like where the actual line is coming out, where you know the boxes, are some of these larger trees that are shown in here?
Those are.
Like landscaped beds, those are going to remain?
Those all remain, all landscaped.
Okay, that's, that's all, I think just, I know we don't hit, hit the stormwater permit on this, but I do think, like, obviously with the, the, the site work that's going to happen is like, sometimes, you know, sediment moves, water moves, and I think the more vegetation trees you remain will help alleviate some of the concerted waters have over downhill.
Yeah. That's the book. You are next, this is public hearing. Yes. I'm.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry. Emily Nicholson, Seventh Avenue path. I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. So, first of all, I'd like to say, like, I'm the downhill of butter to the new septic system. So, and I'd like to say that I'm fairly new to situate. I think the DeNocchios are a lovely couple, I've never met their son, and I think this is a wonderful idea for them. I think it's a smart move and a good thing to do. That being said, you know, worried a little bit about the flow of water that we already have, and just want to get a little more understanding of what could happen in the future. So, at the last meeting, my understanding was that it was going to be an updated system, and now it's being termed a new system? Am I correct in saying that? I'm asking, actually, not telling.
The, the words were almost interchangeable, new septic system versus upgraded septic system. Everything from the foundation out is new. It's new piping, it's new septic tank and pump chamber, and leaching field.
Okay, and then?
New location.
Then my next question.
The difference is it's actually smaller.
Right. So the system that's there right now is actually a series of cesspools, which are older antiquated by the system.
Is it designed for seven bedrooms?
No, it's actually a four-bedroom.
There was a design on file with four bedrooms on most of the cesspools. I believe it's seven. This is six.
So, okay, so then my next question would be, you know, this is, I know we're saying it's a six-bedroom system, but there are really nine bedrooms there, and I believe the DeNocchios plan to use it in a way that this system would be appropriate, but there's a chance that down the road, somebody else would live there and use it not as a six-bedroom usage or flow. And I, I understand there's a way for me to check that, but I think that would really be one of my concerns. So if I do have a concern that the outflow is more than six hundred and sixty, and forgive my unprofessional terminology, I don't know how to say it correctly, but if I suspect that there's more than the given flow, how, how do I check that? That's if the water.
Be called.
Okay, and if they say, oh, it's six hundred and sixty-one, or it's seven hundred, or if it is more, then, then what would I do?
Well, they have the enforcement responsibility, so it would have to be done to the Board of Public.
And what would they do? Like, what?
That's a good question, and you have to ask me.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get like a comfort zone, and it's hard for me to find comfort in, in a lot of these conversations. And like I say, I think the DeNocchios are lovely, I think this is a great idea, but it's hard to find comfort here. So, then I would guess, one of my last questions is, you mentioned that they were drainage downspouts, and I could be saying that incorrectly also, but could you just explain a little more about, are they, those on the existing home, the accessory building, where does that water go?
So the downspouts from the, from the proposed accessory dwelling only, so the new building, those would go into some subsurface leaching chambers. Leaching chambers are chambers that are designed with holes in the side and the holes in the bottom, essentially to recharge that water back into the ground. They're, they're underground structures, okay? Those structures are built above where the existing grade is today, so they're above the groundwater table, so, you know, they would be providing irrigation during periods of high groundwater table as well as throughout the rest of the year.
Are they, are those still on the, Greg?
They are, they're right in front of the, of the.
Oh, is that, that system?
What you were told is that every septic system here, there's a water gap.
Absolutely, I, I think we're going in the right direction. I just think that, you know, like I said, that I, I'm trying to find where my opportunities are to make sure things are right, and it's hard for me to figure out where and when that is. I feel like this is my chance, so I better speak now before I ever hold my peace, because once you, once you guys.
You've done a great job.
So, so I guess I, you know, I would still, you know, in a way, leaning towards, and I don't know, I'm trying to understand the difference between six-bedroom, nine-bedroom septic systems. I wonder why we, if there's concern about all of these things and there's already water coming off, you know, maybe that could be a thought, that could be a solution, if all these other things aren't, that's, you know, still a solution.
When you say that's a solution, what do you, what's a solution?
A nine-bedroom septic system, because really that's what these two homes are, the nine bedrooms, seven in the original and two in the additional. So, like I say, I know the DeNocchios, from what I can tell, their planned usage of it, six-bedroom septic, is totally appropriate, but who knows what's coming down the line? I hope to be here a long time. Who knows what's going to happen in the future? And, you know, the next person could use it as nine bedrooms.
No, unless it's deed restricted, so when you pass favor, you need to know that.
Right, I, I know, and that's, I, I understand that, but I also understand that nobody's really enforcing that, and that it'll be on me to then follow down the line, and as you've just said, what happens, nobody knows. Like, how do I, right, so that's a big open question.
Wouldn't anything in the future that would prevent somebody, you know, from, from doing something that's not in keeping with their permit, right? I mean, we, there's an enforcement mechanism, if we suspect there's a problem, you know, you have to go to the Board of Health and say you think this is overloaded, right?
Right, yeah. I asked that same question to the Board of Health, I was out this afternoon, and the answer I got was, well, the septic system would go into failure.
Right.
And so that's your answer right there. You cannot have your septic system in failure because then the Board of Health would come and enforce that you upgrade it. So, I think that's the assurance that it's not going to be used with the deed restriction, the septic system will go into failure, and you cannot occupy really the septic system in failure. So, I think that's the guarantee that it's not.
I know, I appreciate that. I wish it gave me a warmer fuzzy, it doesn't quite, but I appreciate that sentiment. I guess my last question would be, what was the resolution on where the sump pump pipe is flowing out? What was the end result there? What, what was the decision? I didn't understand.
We can pull it up.
The other way.
You know, we can pull it up closer to the house, we pull it further away from the lot line, and try to redirect it either to the front yard or to the street.
Can you put that into the drywall, please?
What's that?
Put that over to the drywall, is that ready?
At this time of year, the drywall's going to fill up naturally from groundwater, so it won't be any of that.
There's some pumps on last year that are going to storm drain.
There's no storm drains in front of this house, unfortunately.
Yes, yes, there, there. Okay. All right, anybody else? Mr. Schumacher.
Hi, hello, yeah. Casey Schumacher, Three Eight One Path, so on the property that is on the, on the map down below from, was twenty-five Man Hill Road property. I still, back to the, back to the septic, if it's a, if it's a six-bedroom house and you're adding two bedrooms, why wouldn't the requirement be a nine-bedroom septic?
I think the rationale, and you may correct me, is wrong. This is considered to be a repair, because they're, they're saying that there are four bedrooms in the main house and two in the accessory. Therefore, it is less expensive than doing a four-wall.
Not, not quite. The Title V regulations, which is under the authority of the Board of Health, requires when you do a septic system that you do a walkthrough, you've done a walkthrough with an agent of the Board of Health. You count the number of rooms that classifies bedrooms. Whether they're physically used as bedrooms or not is a different story, but to be classified as a bedroom, a room has to have a window, it has to have seventy square feet of size, it has to have a ceiling height of seven foot three inches, it has to have an electrical outlet, it has to offer ventilation. If it meets that requirement, it's a bedroom. There are many houses, especially a lot of the older houses, that have rooms that classify that, whether they were used as studies, libraries, offices, dens, et cetera. I need to design for them as a bedroom. So when you do a walkthrough of this house, you're right, it has more than. So, when you do a walkthrough of this house, you're right, it has more than four bedrooms. The Denofrio family has told me that they want to occupy it as a four-bedroom house. Physically, that's how they occupy it currently as a four-bedroom house. But I am required per the code to design it for more bedrooms. The code also allows us to take bedrooms out of a principal dwelling and apply it into an outbuilding on a property, doing that by a D restriction. That's something that's written in by the State Department of Environmental Protection as a code, and that's what we are doing in this application. We're taking those, those rooms that are up on the third level of this house that are classified as bedrooms, that aren't used as bedrooms, and we're sticking two of them up the accessory column. You're talking about the same enforcement issue here, that how do we know you're not using your finished basement area for a bedroom, or that extra den or sunroom you have out back as a bedroom? You have a permit, you have a floor plan on file with the building apartment. We have conditions, this is being recorded with the D. It will be made aware of anyone purchasing this property, what the bedroom allocation is for this septic system or this property, as long as this septic system shall live, okay?
With the, I mean, with such the high water table in the area, you would think that the town of Situate, when these new dwellings, so this is maybe the fourth dwelling on this property now, you would think...
It's the second dwelling on this property.
Fourth building, there's a difference.
Fourth building, sorry, fourth building on the property now. You would think with such a high water table that this is the opportunity for the town to make sure that going forward, they enforce the, the, I wouldn't say the correct rules, but the, the proper rules. And you want, if there's a se, if there's a current seven-bedroom house, and you're gonna add two bedrooms, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you enforce this at this time, as opposed to go ahead and let six bedrooms go in there?
That is really not within the purview now.
Darren, let me read you the call, email I received at 423 this afternoon from Joan Schmidt in the public health department. The septic system review is complete with no issues. They will need a two-bedroom D restriction for the accessory dwelling and a four-bedroom D restriction for the main home.
With no enforcement.
There are no variances requested with the septic system design. It is in full compliance, I believe, the state design requirements, and it is in full compliance with the town of Situate's supplementary board of health rules and regulations, 100% guaranteed.
Yeah, six, we're not asking for...
Correct.
For a nine-bedroom house.
Well, yes.
That makes sense, but, so what, what happens to the old septic?
It's going to be filled in.
It's an old septic pool that would be abandoned.
Oh, so it doesn't get filled in?
Abandoned, for the regulations requires that the board of health agent inspect it as it gets pumped up, and it gets filled in.
It does get filled in?
Yes, it does.
So, you were talking about some water that was draining, you know, downhill, so it was puddling up on the Denofrios property. So, when that drains down into the soil, where do you think that water goes?
We can't really resolve, contact, no.
It was coming to the groundwater table, is where it's going.
Which is very high, because...
Again, we don't have, we don't have any...
So, I mean, a jurisdiction...
We don't have any jurisdiction on the groundwater, right? I mean, we just, there's nothing, we don't have any rules or regulations that address that. The only thing that we have that addresses it indirectly is that the septic system design has to be a certain height above the high groundwater level, right? And I assume, because you say it's 100% compliant, that it is that height, right? Those are the kind of things we can establish and make sure that they're followed, right? And the board of health does that anyway, that's why they have to defer that some of that, right? But, once we get into the groundwater table, we just don't have, we don't, we don't have any rules, regulations, structure around how we manage groundwater. In, in fact, we don't even know what direction the groundwater is flowing, meaning one particular place or another. And you can't really figure that out unless you do a fairly elaborate, you know, sort of pumping test for, for the groundwater itself, for footwalls, dam, and all that. So, I mean, we just don't have, we don't have sort of the toolkit, if you will, to really address groundwater in that manner.
All right, one last question.
I know, I, I don't need to prolong, because I know you need to move on to other things. But, I went into the board of health to just take a look at this last week, and it was a struggle to get them to let me look at this, but they did let me look at it. And so, if I could just ask a question, can I come, can I approach the thing quick? Because the way they explained it to me, and I could give you just a little further explanation, is that there is a wall, a retaining wall within the leach field. Am I wrong in saying that?
Yes.
Okay. They were saying there's some sort of a wall here. Is there not a wall there?
There's no wall there, there's, there's Title V septic sand, there is a break-up barrier, which is a rubber liner around the system, but there is not a wall.
So, I was just gonna have to know how that functioned, why it was needed. My property is right there, so...
So, they, they have to have a certain slope to the property in order to, to retain a mounted septic system, right? So, they could build a, a retaining wall at some level, but what they have is a slope permit, essentially, so...
I'm sorry, but asking another question. What is, what is a mounted septic system? What does that mean?
It's not a grade, it's a bulk grade. And it's a bulk grade because it's trying to keep the separation between high groundwater and a leach field.
Tori, okay, now I have a, I'm sorry, I have a whole different question, but that's all. From what's there existing right now, is there a bunch of spill coming in to become a disaster?
That's what, when he's talking about the septic sand, right? They remove the material and put material out of the leach, the septic water that comes in. It's more of the groundwater.
But, to be honest with you, I don't even know what to ask. Like, this is all new, I wouldn't, I, you know, I wish I knew the questions to ask, but I don't. And I'm trying to get the information to figure out what to ask and feel comfortable about it. I wish I did, I'm sorry, but I don't.
Well, I'm telling you that everybody in town is experiencing, that's with high groundwater. People who don't have water, and this is just cut up how that goes, you can only hope that lots of stuff are ready on, so that's, and hopefully this may be resolved a little bit. But where you live has varied by growth or time learning. And like I say, new to Situate, wanna love it, it's, it's wearing, I don't want to wreck it, so it could sometimes be a problem. And when you're trying to get the, form a policy about your property... And you do your best to, to conduct that excess water, and I'm sure you want to see a little bit, you want them to see improvement, because it's gonna help the better system in the end.
Yes, that is, that's all right. And like I say, for the Denofrios, I think this is totally right. You know what, this is not personal, this is, this is not personal. Anyway, a million percent, I, like I say, I, I with the Denofrios, I can do the same thing, I believe that's, that's what they do.
I guess, it's, it's one of those issues, is that, it's just townwide, and I guess maybe the relatives should tell people, they might get it for a vote, I, I don't know. And the problem too is, we had, last year, it was an incredibly dry year, a couple of years of no water, and then all of a sudden, since last September, we've been inundated, more rain than we've had in quite a while. So, it is just one of those things, that things that didn't perk when we had rain, when we had seven years of drought, they perk. So, it is, unfortunately, some of these, it's beyond our control. We're doing the very best we can with stormwater, et cetera, and I know that Mr. Morse will build a system in such, such a way that it will not flow from that mouth onto your property. Am I correct, Brett?
Yes.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we need to move on. Darren?
All right.
Any further questions here?
No, most of them.
All right.
And who's made the following requirements of that? One, on 24/1/2019, the Denofrios applied a special permit for a detached accessory dwelling in property 25 Mandalow. Two, based on a floor plan submitted by the applicant, the water area for the proposed accessory dwelling will be approximately 1,000 square feet. This is 34% of the total square footage of the private dwelling, which is 1,051 square feet, according to the application. This means the size requirement is a 5,000 square feet of the zoning by law for accessory dwellings. As the bylaw allows 700 feet square feet or 40% of the total square footage of the private dwelling, whichever is greater, the accessory dwelling is important to the existing single dwelling home. Three, the accessory dwelling will be separated housekeeping unit, and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the block. Four, the proposed detached accessory dwelling structure needs all required setbacks, fully heightened yard requirements for private dwelling. Five, the proposed accessory dwelling is located at the rear of the private dwelling and more than the existing bar. Access will be here, a walkway leading through the existing driveway to the front door. Six, the appearance of the accessory dwelling is similar to the previous to the private dwelling. Seven, the proposed accessory dwelling site present in the property shows a two-minute concrete driveway with two private spaces adjacent to the proposed accessory dwelling. This is adequate to provide two private spaces for the accessory dwelling. Two private spaces for the private dwelling are shown to the south of the accessory dwelling and will probably appear to be provided. The owner has submitted a signed notarized statement, and he will live on a property of public pressure of the accessory dwelling unit. Nine, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by upgraded septic system on-site, which will be D restricted for the two bedrooms, and is to comply with all board of health conditions and type of standards. There will be a separate four-bedroom D restriction for the private dwelling, there will be four bedrooms in the private dwelling and two in the accessory dwelling, a connection to town water will be provided and it will comply with the county requirements for one connection. Ten, stormwater runoff in the roof area of the accessory dwelling will be directed to a subsurface roof infiltration system, while stormwater runoff in the driveway in private dwelling will flow over with acid pressure exhaust. Eleven, the application is to standard for the situaing by law for accessory dwelling special permit. Is there a second or a final discussion?
Second?
Further discussion? All those have failed?
All right.
And who approved the special permit for accessory dwelling 25 Mandalow, with the following conditions, in addition to the stated conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the Plenary Board at Republic hearing on 12/17/15. Except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, and if structures show subsequently performed through the site getting title, signed with proposed accessory dwelling 25 Mandalow by most engineering company, it's scheduled by J. Most P. E. G. 329, with cremations supplied 319. Architectural plans by Mark P. Carfoot A. I. A. G. 3219, consisting of one sheet, include proposed floor plan, let us abbreviate as R. Point, and proposed parish house, flat elimination A. 1. Do you want to continue or shall I? Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to two in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. The number of bedrooms in the private house is limited to four. Accompanied D restrictions shall be provided to the planning office prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling. Four area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon the occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide, shall provide a notarized affidavit that he is living in one of the dwelling units. Under yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1st yearly. Five, all requirements on the board of health must be met. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, and health codes and bylaws. Seven, water connection must be all requirements of the TPW, water tubing for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed should be downlighting, do not shed light on the button properties. Construct, nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM, weekdays and 8:00 AM on Saturdays, and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, which is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal federal holidays. Construction includes idle and vehicles, delivery of materials to the site, and any anc, all other construction activities. Ten, the limited work is to be staked in the field and verified that the disturbance is less than 15,000 square feet. If a stormwater permit is needed due verification from the stormwater guard, the owner shall apply for one. Eleven, runoff from the prop, proposed primary dwelling or accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Twelve, the standing conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board on 12/17/15 shall be conditions of this decision and shall be included in recording of the registry of years. A, the applicant shall meet all requirements of the building department, board of health, department public boards, fire department, water department, confirmation commission, and other county agencies. C, the property shall contain a maximum of two dwelling units, the primary dwelling and accessory dwelling, as proposed. The footprint, number of bedrooms and or square footage shall not be increased without prior approval of the planning board. C, the owner of the property shall reside on the property as long as it contains an accessory dwelling unit. D, the planning board may require an onsite inspection for accordance to the third plan and these conditions prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for each dwelling. E, an accessory dwelling special permit, certification, ownership, and occupancy signed by any new owner shall be provided to the planning board within seven days of the closing of the sale of the house. It is recommended that this be signed at the closing. After any time at the request of the planning board, the owner shall provide a notarized affidavit, affidavit indicating that either the primary or the accessory unit is owner occupied. J, no on-street parking by occupants of the primary or accessory dwelling shall be permitted at any time. H, construction vehicles, equipment shall not idle, be parked, stand, stored, loaded, or unloaded on the street. I, this special permit shall be void if it is not recorded at the registry of deeds within 90 days of the date of filing of the town clerk. The owner shall provide proof of this recording to the planning board. J, the special permit shall last within two years from the date of its issuance unless substantial use of construction has commenced prior to, prior to that time in courts with maps general laws, chapter 48, section 9. E, K, the planning board reserves the right to review compliance with this special permit at any time. This special permit shall determine if use is not in accordance with this decision and its... Is there a second? Further discussion?
We have a quick question about this from the floor, page three. It is my intention to occupy the main house on, on property. It was also my intention to get my parents on one story, do as quickly as possible. I have to sell a home, and I'm not gonna sell it until this is done, it's kind of a timing issue, I mean, all script isn't, it's gonna be occupancy with accessory on the process.
I think I...
Okay, I don't know how far, but...
It will work.
Yeah.
It'll work. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone have a favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll take, turn five and break.
No, it's not good.
Your next step?
Good night.
You're gonna plug it?
Yeah. Do you want anyone to try?
I got 22 minutes right now.
Okay, so we wrestle up our... Maravito, you're on.
My name is Paul Maravito, you're also a real company. And if you're going to adhere to the season, you would be...
You're going to have to speak up so people can hear you.
The owners are on Glen and Charlotte, New York, and they recently purchased the property at sixty Marion Road. The property is outlined in the wall on a plan, just over ten thousand square feet of land. It's in the Arc three district. It's about one or two houses in from Anthony Road. The existing plot out of the site is outlined in orange. It's a small single-family home, about eight hundred fifteen square feet. The proposal is to raise the existing garage at the rear of the property and replace it with a primary dwelling outlined in blue. The size of the primary dwelling was determined by the square footage of the proposed accessory dwelling. They're now looking to consort the large home, revote the property in order to downsize. The accessory dwelling, which would be the one showing in orange, would be thirty-eight point eight percent of the floor area in the primary dwelling. The city design, water and sewer, depends on time. There will be a paved driveway in front of the proposed dwelling, which is showing in blue. There's two parking spaces for the primary dwelling, one to the left front corner of the lot, and one to the right side of the house. The one to the left front corner is currently paved. The other one is nine by eighteen, which will be paved. There's an existing, there's an existing brain line in the middle of the property, which the town has an easement to go on there and maintain and repair it. This was an easement and the original, typically entitled going back to the early nineteen forties. We have looked at it. The only thing we see coming into it is a pipe from the roof runoff for the existing dwelling. We were asked to look at it further by the engineering department because their plan, their very old plan showed that there's a drainage pipe coming from here and going up to Penitent Road, which is the area here, that proved not to be the case. And we did discuss that with Sean McCarthy at the W K bedroom, and we were satisfied that the current location is specified. Here is, there's no intention to change anything on that pipe. It's fairly shallow. Again, the only thing it's tied into is that we could see if the roof runoff from the existing house is fair. There's no change in the elevation of the land, the floor is just there here. There's very little wire grating around the lot here. Everything smokes from this part of the lot up to the street. It's a relatively flat lot. So the proposal would be to leave this in place and construct the primary dwelling. There is precedent for this. The planning board approved this on first parish ground. We have to renew the plan after two thousand and twelve. I think the only room at the time was still one locker, where there's a lot created. And there's a, on a small garage for an apartment to the back. And this was the existing dwelling. The property was sold and we buy it up to the planning board for accessory dwelling special permit, which was approved, to build a proposed two-bedroom dwelling in this area here, which wasn't approved. The septic system is in the back here for whole structures. And this was drafted in the fall of two thousand and twelve. And there's a decision, which I think you have a copy of, that was reported with the council as well. So it's a very difficult situation.
Okay, I have to jump in here. That piece of property is up on first parish ground, which is thirty-one thousand square feet, correct? This is ten thousand square feet. You're putting in a house that's twenty-one hundred square feet. So basically, from what I can see, you've got two houses on one lot.
Say this feels like a tailway of thought. I mean, we're authorized to approve accessory dwellings based on the primary dwelling. And there's only one dwelling on the lot right now, and that's the existing house. So, you know, forty percent of that is what it feels like we're authorized to do. I don't know why we're turning around and approving a primary dwelling. We don't have the authority to approve a primary dwelling.
Well, we're not going to approve a primary dwelling. Where I started...
There's only one dwelling on the lot.
There's one dwelling on the lot, to press a copy.
Right, so if you take thirty, forty percent of that, that's what we can approve as an accessory dwelling. That's not an accessory dwelling, that's a primary dwelling. All right, right now?
The purpose of the...
I hear what you're trying to navigate here, but I don't know that that's within our purview too.
Also, two, under section five thirty point one D, we are authorized here to protect stability, property values, and character of the single-family residential neighborhood. This, to me, appears to be two houses on one ten thousand square foot lot that, in my opinion, does not quite pass the straight face judgment.
Well, let me back up one year's only by a lot, please. There's no prohibition for having accessory dwelling on a ten thousand square foot lot.
That's true, Paul, but you're making a new primary dwelling and then theoretically a subservient dwelling after you... I think that Steve is right, you're putting, you know, on the door.
Frank, if I, I, frankly, the way this is being done, I actually can't thought about it a lot, and the logic does not make sense to me, the way it's done in the bylaw. I understand the case you brought up, the precedent case, but I think to Ann's point, that was a R one, much larger lot, and there's a common driveway involved, and it's a very different looking feel in terms of the site plan. And to be frank, if I had standing, I probably would appeal the decision, but I was not here then, and I don't understand anything to appeal it. But I just don't see how this is going to work. Frankly, I'm a huge fan of accessory dwellings. I mean, it's a great zoning tool for smart growth and things like that. I would note that in an Arc three zone, it's perfectly able to do a two-family residence. And I would be very wary of making, setting a new or resident or further enforcing possibly court decisions made in the past, where now if you can take any primary dwelling, call it an accessory dwelling and build a new primary residence.
With something that's, you know, sixty percent larger, right? Or however big you want, right? Well, it's got to conform with the forty percent rule, right? So you're sort of forced to build a bigger, bigger property. It feels to me like if you've got, how big is this, this existing parcel of property?
Ten thousand square feet.
No, I mean, perhaps eight hundred and fifteen square feet, so forty percent of that is, you know, three hundred and four hundred square feet. And that seems like what you could build.
The size of the new house is determined by...
I'm not looking at the new house, I'm looking at the house that exists and saying, what kind of accessory dwelling is available to you with that existing dwelling?
I think they can do seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Not twenty-one hundred.
Right. But we're basing calculations on the existing dwelling.
Okay.
No, the size of the, the size of the primary dwelling in this application was determined by the size of...
There's only one primary dwelling right now. There's nothing existing on the site, except one building. And we'll do our calculations against that.
When I started the project, I spoke to Bob Vogel, I said, Bob...
Doesn't matter.
Let me tell you, I can't file for two houses on one lot.
Right.
So I said, the size of the primary dwelling would be determined by the size of the existing dwelling, which we're talking about to an accessory dwelling. The blue house is, the point dwelling would be thirty-eight percent of the proposed house. The other option is to make that proposed house much bigger, which it could do, but they don't want to put a big house on there. I know the lawyers don't have, they're telling me. So we kept that blue house at the bare minimum.
I'm not prepared to argue with those kinds of things, Paul. I mean, I think we have set rules and regulations that address an accessory dwelling to an existing primary dwelling, right? And we're more than willing to evaluate that, right? But we're not, I'm not willing to set a precedent that says, we're going to go backwards, right? We're going to, we're going to call everything on any law an accessory dwelling, and then anybody can build twice the size of that as a, as a primary house. I don't think that's what was intended when the, when the bylaw was put in place. So I'm not prepared to extend whatever precedent we said exists there. I don't necessarily agree with that precedent. I'm a little bit, either way, sorry.
You are not saying a precedent. You know what the other option for them to do? Go to the building department and ask to, ask to put in a decision, rather than a orange house. A huge admission. Come back and apply to accessory dwelling.
And kind of join. Join.
If that's what you want to do, then do it.
Just more than...
That's not, Paul, you don't seem to understand. According to our accessory dwelling special permit, it is to protect the stability, property values, and character of the single-family residential neighborhood. Two houses, one lot. Yes, sir?
I'm more of an advocate, obviously, but most of the houses in that area are on five thousand square foot lots that we can see. So they're basically out of five thousand square foot lot. Basically, what we're doing, I mean, I know what you're saying, you're squeezing two houses, and we're really putting two houses on a ten thousand square foot lot that doesn't affect the integrity of the neighborhood. We wouldn't want to do that. Basically, it's going to fit right, it's going to look nice, it's only going to bring up the neighborhood. That's, that's my view, Paul. I understand what you're saying, if you put the two houses on a five thousand square foot lot, it's not going to do anything good. But most of those houses are five thousand square feet, and that's why we attacked it this way by saying it's a ten thousand square foot lot. Basically, it used to be two five thousand square foot lots that were attached. So we separated it just as if it was a five thousand square foot lot.
But it isn't. It is not, and it never will be.
No, no, I'm saying the integrity of the neighborhood would not be affected because it would still all be the, basically, it's a...
I would say, and I'm not, I'm not sort of really thinking about, you know, the two houses on one lot or anything like that. If the blue, blue dwelling here was your existing house, and you wanted to build the accessory dwelling, then I think we have the authority and the ability to do that through the special permit process. The problem that I see here is we're going the other way.
No, I understand.
There's an existing house. And so we have the authority and ability to give you an accessory dwelling under a special permit that's seven hundred and fifty square feet, right? We can do that.
Right. I mean, what happened if we gutted this, so turned it into a dwelling, turned it into an accessory building, and gutted that, called it a garage, then built the dwelling, and then went for the accessory permit, the same thing?
I don't think so, because then you'd have to, first of all, you'd have to raise what you have there, then you have to go to the billing department and get a permit to build a new house, right?
You'd have to go to the CPA to raise and reconstruct.
Would you have to raise it completely? I've just got it and just turned it into a storage, small enough to be a storage bond. You know, I mean, that's, that's my thought. Believe me, the place inside isn't that nice, it has to be done anyways. Maybe that's, that's the route we go, but...
I, you know, I don't know these other routes. I'm just thinking about what comes to us all the time.
Right.
And this may be one circumstance, but what it feels to me like is a very slippery slope for the planning board to say, if somebody came to me with, you know, a one-acre lot where they had a four thousand square foot home on it, and said, okay, I want to make that the accessory dwelling, and my primary dwelling is going to be eight thousand square feet. It's just, it's going the opposite direction, I think, than what we're authorized to do under the design bylaws. And that's, that's all I want to sort of address here, right? I'm not trying to make a value judgment one way or the other, or to give you direction on how to do this one way or the other. I just, you know, if we want to try to do this as accessory dwelling, it seems to me we have to look at the primary dwelling that exists and say, what could we give you as an accessory dwelling, what would you want to build for that? And I think our maximum is seven hundred and fifty square feet right now, so...
Well, that's what, with the precedent that was set, we figured, it's already been done, has been done by this law.
But we can see that, but it's three times large, so it has to do density issue. And across the street, it was ten thousand square feet, right? Got losing one little house that sits there, as does the square on the other street. So I...
Well, I would also say that, you know... Well, I would also say that, you know, that's one way to look at it. I don't necessarily agree with the precedent that was set. And I don't feel like we really have the authority to do that, that way. And I wouldn't wanna start the avalanche of projects to go that direction, I guess. And that's all I'd say. If the bylaws got changed and said, you know, you can look at it this way, that, you know, the town has spoken, and we could do what the bylaws say. I just don't think it gives us, I mean, the building inspector may think he gives us the authority. I don't think he gives us the authority to do it, anyway. And there may have been other special circumstances on the common driveway thing, too, that I don't even know about on that particular precedent. But that's kind of more where I'm coming from on it. And I don't know if you could, probably, you can't really subdivide this land, right? You can't make it back into two five thousand acre lots, right?
But to my point earlier, if, you know, if you still wanted to receive the benefits that an accessory dwelling has, like maybe you have family that you wanna live with, maybe you're in a rental property, by right, you can do a two-family residence in this. It's not possible, as we conceptualize your project. I mean, that's, you don't have to say, "Oh, we're gonna tear that down or make that a garage, and then build a big house, and then do an accessory dwelling." We could look into that.
We could even build that, attach it, and that becomes the same one house also.
Yeah, I mean, you could literally...
Toys around it, but it's just...
You could design in addition to the existing house, and you could go to the building department.
And you could also put a walkway there, which I don't think would look too neat for the neighborhood, that a giant walkway going between a little house and a big house. That's what we're trying to do at this point, you know?
I mean, you could build breezeways.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, so I really don't know how to tell you how to design it and all that. I'm just more concerned about what kind of, what kind of sort of message it's sending from the planning boards, sort of bylaw authorities, if you will. I think it's, I just, it feels to me like it's going the wrong direction here.
Steve, so, you're, are you saying, I'm not sure. Are you saying that there's no way you can have an accessory dwelling?
No, they could get, they could apply for a seven hundred and fifty square foot accessory dwelling based on the size of their current building, right? And that would be the primary, then there would be an accessory. And it could be attached to it, or it could be, like, detached, like over the garage or something like that, you know, we've done those before.
What do you mean?
But I'm just saying, it can't be two thousand square feet, because the math doesn't do it right, right? That's all I'm saying.
I mean, the problem is, is that the primary dwelling, the blue house, was there. If the blue house was there, it would be true.
Yeah, sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
That's the problem.
I mean, it'll still be, it still requires a special permit. You would still have to look at it and say, you know, that it sort of blends together, and it, you know, it's clearly, you know, subordinate to the primary dwelling and all. There's a lot of requirements in the special permit process, right? But if that blue outline actually existed as a building, sure, you could propose an accessory dwelling based on the size of that building.
I think we know how to vote the draw based on that. I'd like to request that we're gonna go to, well, the draw and application, right?
So...
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the continuance.
Can I ask one question on that?
Yes, would you identify?
Not on that, a general question about the accessory dwelling.
All right, you have to identify yourself.
Joe Carroll.
Address, Joe.
Fourteenth Hennecrass Harbor, Sichu. You said that that zoning in that area...
I'm sorry, I was...
For two family...
I was still giving, I realized that was on double the law there, so I get four advice. It was double the law there.
Next question. You said that you have to, every year, that they come in the shop and make sure the owner is living in one of the dwellings?
They have to certify.
They had to tell certify, yes.
So you said like every March first, they certify? Okay. Let's say a long-time resident applies, gets approved, it's done, and now the person dies. He leaves it to family members, cousins, his relatives, a non-relative, he leaves it to a friend. What applies there?
If the friend is the owner.
And assume that now that person incorporates that property, and he's not the owner. The corporation is the property because he's renting one of the properties.
If the owner is living in one of the properties, it's fine.
Who's the owner of the corporation owns it?
Whoever owns the corporation.
No, because...
Right?
Not really. Not really.
No, I've seen that issue in the accessory dwelling, and I think that needs to be amended as well. Because what if, also, you have short-term employment, and you wanted to live and still live in Sichu, and you have to move away for a couple years, and you wanna rent whole houses?
Correct.
And then you would be illegally having that accessory dwelling. I see what you're, I've seen that.
I just asked you a question.
The accessory dwelling... Well, it doesn't allow it to happen, right? As currently written, it would no longer be an accessory dwelling.
Right, but then it's virtually unenforceable.
Not unenforceable. Do you draw his occupancy?
If you knew.
Yeah, I mean, you would have to know, obviously, you'd have to get the owner back. If you're asking the question, what happens? The only way that bylaw addresses it right now is the owner hasn't occupied one of the two lots.
But there's twelve owners in that corporation.
Yeah, so nobody's occupying...
Which one has to live there?
Nobody's occupied it.
You're saying, just throw that out there.
Nobody's occupied it, nobody's occupied it, right?
Interesting concept.
Will we back to the next area, Paul?
Thank you.
Back to the next area, Paul.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, we have the continuance for, that's half back three. I want to request a, that you request to continue the public key, the site condition you for the municipal one, to play well, seven eight ninety-nine six, half back three five five, and only twenty-three thousand dollars, if you want. Continue to apply actual capacity until you complete the thousand and fifty, so, yeah?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Next. We need a moment. And it's, I want to approve the meeting, the plea, Mr. April Twenty Two thousand nineteen. The second?
Second.
All in favor? Karen, I want your proof recognition of three thousand five hundred forty dollars to the accessory dwelling corporation for purity of two forty-seven hundred for a new M E T A. Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I went to the Slappy the other night about couple things, which I found one fascinating, that John Sullivan, who's with the Irish group, Sister City, and they want to construct a memorial to the left of the Bane Stand called Parkland to commemorate the Easter uprising of nineteen seventeen, I think that was the laws. And he wants it there because that's where they read the proclamation in April of twenty seventeen, or whatever that date was. And this monument is seventy tall. So with the proclamation, the whole proclamation. That's a good question. But at any rate, that was sort of on the table, but I saw that as one. And then the next thing had to do with Cedar Point and Soren, and that's on the table. They want more study. People who live on Cedar Point don't wanna change what they have, even though they would have a big one. The town would take responsibility and warranty, the cops, they're concerned that if they lost their electricity, that they wouldn't be able to flush, or if they lost their electricity in a big storm, you can...
And you always go back to the input, though.
Right. And I know people who have some, do some systems that if when the power goes out, nothing works. So that's my, my as long.
And you said they approved, the sewer and water board approved the study?
Yes.
So it's somehow gonna get kicked off? And what was the price?
Just under one hundred bucks a month. Now we're sure the children...
Well, part of the proposal that was approved recommended a, like, an advisory group as part of it. So if they come asking for it, I would participate.
You will be there, there's no question about that.
And I thought a lot of the proposal was relatively good, and still think they missed the market in certain places, and what they did is they go...
Well, your input was mentioned with the one.
It probably said, "Stop sending letters."
No, they did not do that at all, not at all. Anybody else?
We want to desire review to the city center again. Needs to change, we have iterations. I guess we have to go Monday night to town meeting, and then vote. And then we will have another town meeting, depending on that, what the...
Is that, is that something that you're gonna follow, sort of a process, which is to do an informal discussion with us before they file anything?
They did have an informal discussion, but not here. And...
What was that?
They came in and they had a little presentation, a power board presentation. And we all, we came away from this presentation that the parking is totally included in the ad with, and that the traffic plan is totally included in the ad with. And they can absolutely no clue about what was going to happen with the building. So is that the correct, okay, it seems like it got dumped down there. They planted it after they moved the buildings, right? You possibly said, "Well, it's insane," so...
Who presented, when you said they signed it?
I thought you were the designer, the architect. And it keeps, they had almost a half a dozen presentations. So it was this building that wasn't really anymore, and it was, it wasn't...
Which building was it?
It was a good building, it was a good building. All right. So I just, I'm down, the other day, with baseball, and all of them down public, they were... I don't know if there's one way if you could maybe angle parking or something, make it better.
It should be one way.
It might be another way to do it. Probably, maybe a street, a townway.
But you gotta predict your...
I don't know, I was just thinking, because they'll be there at any time, but like... There was going on here, there was pets going on here, and it was just crazy.
Okay, Karen.
All right, so we just received tonight as-built from Mr. Ham before Union Street. We'll have that being reviewed. He has a price for three garage doors on the existing building. And he, one of your conditions was he was supposed to come within ninety days, and she didn't. So then he come back to end the project. Well, he hasn't occupied theoretically that.
He does, or does not?
Does not. But he's wondering if he could do one, you know, not do them all right now, but do, you know, stagger them like about one month.
So what's, what would these are now?
They just, they, there's, on the old, on the new, on the new part, there's the new garage doors. On the old part, it's...
So he's talking about the old garage doors?
Right, that was part of the permit.
So he wants to phase it in?
He wants to phase it in.
Like one a month?
Yeah, like one a month, because they're, they're priced...
As long as it's one a month, and not one a year.
No, then I will, I'll just submit you now, and I will...
I mean, would you guys be okay with it?
Of course.
I mean, he's just trying to spread out the cost a little bit. I think we could do the three months.
Then the other thing that he did, Karen and I went out there, where he has a snow storage at the front of the block.
Yeah.
Is all gravel, and this room, that's a little bit hard, this room is three cars. And the attic, for lack of a better description, is all plumbed and accessory dwelling.
Do I have to put a sign on the, on the gravel parking area, no parking, snow storage? Never gonna pay attention to the sign. But at least, at least you try.
In the winters, it won't matter, show me if it's snowing.
No, it's not.
I was just kind of considered gravel for a very serious service. Is it considered a very serious service?
Yeah, it's...
So wouldn't it restore order, if that's in the water resource, this is happening for that side? What was it?
I'm just, I'm just wondering if adding parking would have affected the storm.
I don't believe so.
Okay. What was supposed to be there? Grass?
Grass.
Why, why is it in grass?
Because he thought gravel would be better for snow.
Well, then, that's not what we approved.
All right, so you want me to go back?
I mean, if he's asking to do the garage doors one a month, that's fine. But if he's, if he's modified the design...
All right, so you want me to challenge if he needs to take out the gravel and have it grass?
Well, it's different.
Consent is of the board?
It has different perbius, or perbius. I would say I would just come discuss why modifications were made.
Now, what do you think he's thought of himself in here? All right, so that's number one. Number two, Fifty Country Way, with above a temporary occupancy for building A. I don't have the, I don't have proof that the... We have a couple of restrictions, one is for the, one is for the public accesses, not that hold is recorded, I don't have proof of that. There's supposed to be amusement, the facade of the face of the building, not to be, a restriction that that not be changed for thirty years, I don't have that. The landscaping hasn't been done, white racks haven't been done, we don't have an as-built. We don't know the fence, where the fence is in. There's no full punch list from site perspective, because I don't have an as-built which to send to our consulting engineer. So we theoretically still have, we have the bond for five hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is being currently paid. Obviously, the site contractor would love to get out of that bond, because...
Told him not to.
They told him not to.
The last thing we wanted to do is take the bond and try to finish whatever, you know, that...
And he's not doing, he's not doing landscaping, the site contractor's not doing landscaping.
Your only leverage is holding a C of L, right?
That's my only leverage.
I say, you know, here's the checklist, let's get it done. Is there anything that, that is sort of not possible to get done because of some, some other circumstance that he doesn't have control over?
Not everywhere. He's asking for a temporary C of L.
Temporary?
Temporary C of L. All, the two other buildings have temporary C of Ls. Are they all occupied? Not fully occupied each one, I don't believe.
So the two residential buildings have temporary C of Ls, not permanent?
No.
And what are we waiting for it looks?
We're basically waiting to handle the project, because we're gonna have to, plus the, with the grass, the grasscrete paving in the aisle, the J E's, that's not done. That is supposed to, will be done in spring. We need, granted them temporary C of Ls, because we needed to get tenants in to get some...
Which is supposed to open July.
Right, it feels like we've gone as far as we should at this point. I just get, get the checklist, the checklist completed, no?
Okay.
I mean, that would be my...
I actually heard from a resident that lives in one of the buildings, he rented it, and they feel like they're living in a construction zone, because there's no landscaping, and everything's dirt. It's like, it doesn't, they don't feel like they're occupying a building right now.
A third world country.
So they could tighten it up a little bit.
Because they know they're only temporary.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I will not, I will not be signing off tomorrow. No. We still have... Um, we, we still continue to spend plenty of time on Trenton Roaders. So that's kind of all I'm going to say, we saw our emails this week and it's...
Has all that been filed with the, the cleanup stuff?
No.
No?
No. They're in the process of, I mean, they're done with the re-aging, but they, I don't believe all paperwork has been filed yet.
That was one of the, one of the criteria. I'd certainly like to make sure that that gets done.
It will be, our, our consulting engineers on that.
Okay.
We were just extremely busy.
A little PTO current.
Almost sometimes, sometimes. That's about it, that's about it. Anything else? I'll let you choose.
I second Bill's move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.